Okay, good morning. We're missing a few council members, but I'm assuming they'll be showing up. Welcome to City Hall, everyone, and thank you for joining us today. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Oh, I guess we need to, here we go. And this morning, our invocation will be led by our good friend Reverend Claude Axel with Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to say thank you for your many, many blessings. The blessings are so numerous that all we can do is say thank you. Heavenly Father, we would also ask a special prayer for the police officer, Kyle Hicks. Oh God, I pray that you will touch and heal his body. Bless his family as well as his kids and all of the other first responders and the men and women who serve in other leadership roles and others who are protecting our city, our state, and our nation. And we come again just to say thank you for this meeting today. I pray for continuous guidance, leadership, and thank you for the dedicated service that all of these public servants do. It is in your precious name that we ask this prayer and we say amen.
Thank you Reverend. And our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas State Flag will be led by Alyssa Cantu Benwer. She is a senior at Richard King High School, Vice President of King Theater Club, National Hispanic Recognition Award she received, and a two-time Texas Forensic Association State Qualifier.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Alyssa, and good luck. Ms. Whitaker, would you please call the role?
Mayor Palet Wajardo.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barrera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Jim Klein.
Mike Pesley.
Everett Roy.
Dan Suckley.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
Deputy City Attorney Buck Bryce. Okay, we do have a quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you Ms. Whitaker. Okay, we'll go on to Section E, which is our City Manager's Comments and Update on City Operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Great, thank you. Good morning Mayor and Members of the Council. We do have two items on the City Manager's Report, and a more significant one is the Buck Day. So Johnny Filippello's here, he's going to go over it. But we do want to make also a significant announcement, which is the appointment of an Assistant Director over Finance and Administration and Corpus Christi Water. And this is a very important position. We'll be working with Camille Tara quite a bit, and Drew Molly, of course, our COO in the coming months, as we look at our water and wastewater financials. So some background on Camille, and he's here with us this morning. On April 1, I appointed Camille as the Assistant Director for Finance and Administration after he served as an interim in that role. Camille now oversees Corpus Christi Water's annual operating and capital budgets, financial management, water and wastewater rates, and contracts and procurement in this position. Camille has the experience that's needed. He has over 14 years of experience in finance and budgeting in both the private and public sectors. He joined the City of Corpus Christi back in 2015 as a Budget Analyst II in the Office of Management and Budget. And in 2018, he was promoted to develop the first-ever capital improvement program that we look at each year and has been improving ever since. And he was responsible for coordinating the development of it and oversight with the departments as we progress through a fiscal year. Camille's background is, he holds a Bachelor of Economics from Stony Brook University. And with that, Camille, we're going to have you come up. He's got a fresh haircut and everything this morning, right?
I did.
Yeah, Camille's just going to say a few words to us this morning.
Absolutely. Good morning Mayor and Council. It was a pleasure serving the Budget Department, the city, for the past nine years. As the City Manager stated, creating the Capital Improvement Plan and maintaining it. And it's an honor to be now serving my community in this new capacity. As many of you know, and probably the rest of you figured out, I am not a native Corpus Christian. I will be the first one to admit it. I'm Polish. I was educated in New York City. So not from here, but as my bumper sticker said, when I got to Texas, I wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could. So I do apologize. In a recent conference, I said the same thing to Texas Controller Grant Hegger, and he said to me, "Texas is sticky." And if you're as confused by this statement as I was, basically what he meant by that is that 85% of people who are born in Texas or move to Texas stay in Texas. And I believe by what the City Council has done recently, the City Manager, by the initiatives and the infrastructure improvements we have done in the city, Corpus is well on its way to be as sticky as the great state of Texas. So in conclusion, I would like to say to Mayor, Council, City Manager Zanoni, Chief Operating Officer Molly, Serdechny Jinkuyes, Gwen Bicereta, which means, "Thank you sincerely. Thank you from the bottom of my heart."
All right, great. Thanks, Camille. We look forward to your continued service in the city in these coming months where we'll be looking at our financials in these two operations. Okay, so that brings us next to the Buck Days Festival. And believe it or not, it's just two weeks away. Johnny Filippello, the President and CEO of the Buccaneer's Commission is here. So Johnny is the President and CEO of the Buccaneer's Commission. He's here today to give us a brief presentation on what will be our 86th Annual Buck Days Festival. And it begins about two weeks from now on Thursday, May 2, and it'll go through Sunday, May 12. An important note to point out here before I turn it over to Johnny is that each year, the Buccaneer's Commission raises dollars to help for scholarships across our community. Last year, they raised a little over $200,000. They have a goal this year of $250,000 to be raised through these events to help those that need scholarships in college. We know the Buck Days is one of our most popular events. There's carnivals, rodeos, parades, live music, great food, and much more. An important part of the Buck Days, the mayor and all mayors are well familiar with, which is the walking of the plank. And that kind of is the unofficial official start of Buck Days. That'll be on May 2, and it'll start at 5 o'clock. And the mayor is set to walk around 5:25.
Or jump, run and jump.
Or jump, right into the cold bay waters. So you can watch that on our live broadcasts on YouTube and Facebook pages as well, if you can't participate on the seawall. We do anticipate large crowds, as always, for the Buck Day celebrations. So the city does have a traffic improvement plan, a traffic control plan to be implemented. We do expect a lot of pedestrian and vehicular activity, so we do remind drivers to be careful and be alert. There will be park and ride shuttle services from our partners at RTA as well, if you want to use some of that. So with that, let me turn it over to Johnny to provide an overview of this event coming up. Johnny?
Excellent. Thank you, Peter. Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Buccaneer Commission, we're excited to invite the entire community to Buck Days, May 2 through 12. I believe we've got a PowerPoint that's coming up. I can see it down here. One second here. All right, May 2 through 12. You can see this year, we have a significant number of things happening throughout the 11 days of the festival. The Shops at Treasure Island and Carnival will take place all 11 days, and then we'll talk through some of these other events that will happen throughout the timeframe of the event. You're going to hear me talk a lot about partnerships that we formed this year to grow and expand what we're doing. Two of the most important ones that we've formed are with the Corpus Christi Museum of Science and History and the Art Museum. Both of those museums will be open during our operation hours and included in the price of admission to come into Buck Days. So the footprint, if you come and enjoy the carnival or shopping, you can take your family and check out both museums along the way. The Science and History Museum will actually be one of our main entry gates into the festival grounds. So really excited to work with those groups on this opportunity. In the Shops at Treasure Island, we'll have over 60 vendors coming and participating. And you might have heard on the news earlier this week, we've also formed a partnership with Hi Ho to where the restaurant will be set up and in the convention center all 11 days as well. So we're really excited to embrace this come-stay-all-day experience that you can have with your family and check out all the great offerings as part of that. The Night Parade, as we see Leopard Street almost back to fully operational with the brand-new pavement, we're excited to have the Rally Night Parade at Leopard Street again this year. May 4, that's the largest single-day event that the community embraces. We've also increased a partnership back with CCICD. So for the first time since 2010, the parade will go through Buck Stadium. So really excited to have that opportunity back for folks to enjoy. That partnership was really made possible through a couple of groups. American Bank Center has a covering that we're able to use to cover the track that can protect this. And so we'll drive straight through the stadium and have the broadcast from the stadium as well, where we present scholarships to our young people. PBR Velocity Tour Finals is May 3 and 4. This is the culmination of a '26 tour event. We are the final championship event for that tour. So all roads truly are leading to Corpus Christi. The cool thing about this is a partnership that's gone on dating back to really December this year, where at every event stop, they're promoting the city of Corpus Christi, the beaches, the attractions we have, and encouraging people to not only just come down and check out the championship event that we're having during Buck Days, but also check out our great fishing and beaches and all the great destination opportunities we have. So just in-person reach, over 340,000 people have heard the story of Corpus Christi at all those locations throughout the event. So come support this great national sporting event that's right here in our hometown. Rodeo Corpus Christi is the second weekend. We've added a day of competition this year, so Tuesday, May 7, we will have the Division Youth Showcase. We'll actually feature top eight youth in the world standings of rodeo on that Tuesday performance, and follow that with the concert as well. We have a wide range of artists, not only country, but rock and roll and Tejano to showcase at that event. And really excited to have this lineup to bring to Corpus Christi. One of the important things, we're one of three rodeos that's part of the Triple Crown of rodeo. And the lady featured here, Stephanie Fryer, has won the previous two events leading up to ours. If she wins Buck Days, she'll receive a million-dollar bonus. So just something to follow as we go through the event. And then, as being one of those three events, we're also one of only three showcased on CBS nationally. So June 2, there'll be an hour-long broadcast of the championship round of Buck Days, and with that becomes all the eyeballs that get to see our beaches and marina and all of the beautiful assets that our community offers. On average, we've done this now for about three years. We're averaging about 600,000 households watching that broadcast on June 2. So just another great reach for us and the community. We've talked a little bit about the festival outside and obviously the arena events. What we're really proud of is what we're growing in the convention center, and that's called the Buck Day Steam Expo. It started as just a robotics event, and we're continuing that, but it's really taken off. We're focusing on steam competitions for youth. May 4 and 5, we'll have over 150 teams from all over Texas. One team from Mexico, Indiana, and Oklahoma are all coming to participate in this. We'll award prizes to these over 1,400 kids at this competition. So if you get time, come check out this in the exhibit hall as well. It's a great way to showcase what we're doing and reward kids for their efforts in science and technology. Additionally, we've started a new competition of local teams. This is really just getting off the ground this year. We had nine local teams enter this, of all age, elementary through high school students. They worked with engineers to CAD design projects like the one you've seen here. And on the first Saturday of the event in the C-100 hallway, they'll be constructing these can structures. That's canned goods you see there. And at the conclusion of Buck Days, over 20,000 canned goods will be donated to the food bank from this competition. So come check out these efforts. Will be on display all the remaining days of Buck Days after that Saturday as well. And you'll see us keep building on this and hopefully include more and more of the footprint in future years. And then our last weekend is the Buck Days Food Challenge. This is a 4-H STEAM program. It's students competing in teams. Like the chopped TV series, they're given a list of ingredients, and they have to come up with a dish, present it to judges, and then awards are compiled there. So kind of fitting in with the hospitality industry that we're really trying to grow, the next generation of chefs and restaurant partners in the community. But again, we'll have teams from all over the state coming and participating in this as well. We're really only scratching the surface with these. Our goal is to program these type of events, all 11 days of Buck Days in the convention center. So we're going to keep challenging each year to add more and more of these type of things to bring families together and support education. And then lastly, the Port of Corpus Christi Leadership Program. These are 20 students representative of campuses all over the coastal bend, Kingsville, Centon, Corpus Christi, everywhere in between. We've had over 160 applicants. These 20 students have gone through semester-long training of leadership, community service, giving back. And you'll see them at Buck Days helping as well. And then on the Night Parade pre-show, you'll see us award over $90,000 in scholarships to these young people as we send them on their way to their future educational endeavors. The last thing I want to share with you is one more partnership we've formed, really with the creative community. And you'll recognize this young lady who helped, she wrote this song. It's a video that was put together by Nightstorm Productions, and will be the kickoff to our rodeo events this year. It's just something fun we thought would get everybody excited for Buck Days. So let's see if this will play.
Johnny, did you say she wrote the song?
So Clarissa wrote that song. There's actually a couple more verses that we'll showcase later on in this, but really cool. It kind of ties the whole community spirit. And it goes beyond rodeo and some of the other verses, but super proud of what she put together.
Way to go Clarissa. I hope she's watching.
Hey Johnny, as always, great job. I mean, you and the Buck Commission, I mean, you've just elevated the, it's bigger and better and bigger and better. And, you know, on an anecdotal basis, this last weekend, I had the pleasure of hosting a leadership group from the Texas Association of Mexican-American Chambers of Commerce. And a councilman from Kyle, Texas, what is it, was saying that he's coming back for Buck Days, and it was unsolicited. You know, we just started, actually, I just started talking, "Yeah, we're getting excited about Buck Days." He says, "We're coming." And what is it? They were excited about all the talent. Another individual from Houston was talking about how much more that they like our rodeo, because when you're in the Reliance Center, you know, it's just, there's no good seat because you're just so far away. And that it's just such a better location to what we have. And, you know, I mean, you and, and I just can't tell you, I was really excited to hear that, because they were looking forward to coming back to Corpus Christi and people from these large metropolitan areas, and you and your team and all the work that you do for scholarships. Hey, my hat's off to you, man. Great job.
Thank you Roland. And just to kind of wrap up, a comment or two, the improvements that are being made to the city terrace are going to be phenomenal to showcase the event to some of our VIPs and supporters to really help continue further in that scholarship giving. And then Peter, your team's been excellent to work with to prepare, from traffic engineering to PD to fire to American Bank Center staff, everybody in between. It takes the whole city to make it come together, and we thank all of you for the partnership.
We appreciate it, and thank you for the presentation.
You bet. Have a good day.
Thank you Johnny. Yeah, great job. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Report for this morning.
Thank you, Peter. So as we proceed to Item G, Public Comment, I'd like to just take a moment to emphasize the importance of this business meeting. "We handle very significant matters concerning taxpayer dollars, making it imperative that we uphold the highest standards of decorum and adherence to our policies. We've received feedback from the community regarding our adherence to our own policies and our decorum, prompting us to reiterate our commitment to these principles. So as you entered the council chambers, you were likely handed a leaflet or offered one outlining our council policy and decorum, which we urge everyone to familiarize themselves with. It's incumbent upon me It is incumbent upon me as the mayor and each council member to adhere to these policies diligently. Our core principles of openness, transparency, and inclusiveness guide our actions, and we aim to achieve them while respecting our city council policy, which has been in place for over 30 years. Public comment serves as one avenue for communication, but it is not the sole method. You can also reach out to members of this council by way of phone calls, emails, or even in-person appointments, and we encourage all of them. With that said, we're going to go ahead and proceed to public comment, keeping in mind the importance of decorum and the adherence to this policy. Before I begin, I'd like to ask our city attorney Buck to review the council decorum. The rules will also be displayed on the television screens above for our audience's reference.
Sure. All citizens must be courteous, polite, and respectable of one another, including the city council and city staff. The mayor and council members shall be referred to by title and/or title surname. All remarks must be addressed to the mayor and the city council and not to the council members as individuals. Citizens are only permitted to speak on city-related subject matter. Speaking on any non-city-related matter is prohibited. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed. Citizens must refrain from any disturbing noise, demonstration, or other acts disrupting the city council business.
Thank you, Buck. Some individuals would be called upon in the order, they signed up electronically. We will first hear from in-person comments, followed by virtual public comments. Residents of Corpus Christi will be given priority over non-residents. And for those speaking in person, please remember that the meeting is recorded, and as we ask you, please to speak into the microphone located at the podium stating your name and address prior to speaking. You have two options to make public comment on an agenda item or city-related business. First is at this present time, and the second is when we actually hear the item itself. So please select one option. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, while non-resident comments are limited to one minute. A visible timer positioned near the city secretary's desk will assist in managing the allotted time. Upon completion of the allocated time, a buzzer will signal the conclusion of your comment. If you have a petition or any relevant information that you would like us to have, if you'll please hand that to our city secretary prior to speaking, she'll hand it to us, and then you can begin your comment. So with that, we will start with Patricia Anderson. Yes, sir. Councilman, Councilman.
Mayor, with respect to this second item on the little card about the mayor and council members shall be referred to by title and/or title surname. Last week, we had someone who came up and did anything but that, and it was allowed to continue. So I just want to know who's going to enforce that and when, what's going to happen if that occurs again.
That would be our legal. Buck?
Yes, either I or the city secretary can chime in.
Yeah, we need to make sure we don't let that go. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, good morning. Gail Anderson, District 2, and I'd like to dedicate this lament to all the, those who have been injured by the vaccine. It's entitled "Lament of the Vax-Injured" by Margaret Anna Alice. They told us it was safe. They told us it was effective. They told us everyone was doing it. They told us not, they told us not getting it was selfish. They told us it was the only way. We could study, workshop, live. We listened to them. Why would they lie to us? We trusted them. Why would they hurt us? So we got it. And every day since, that irrevocable, life-shattering decision has been unrelenting agony and exhaustion, apprehension, regret, uncertainty, and dread. Our lives are now a continuum of questioning, searching, testing, fretting. They tell us we're faking it. They tell us we're lying. They tell us we're imagining it. They tell us we're anxious. They tell us we're exaggerating. And once it's undeniable, when the diagnoses show heart damage, blood clots, myocarditis, pericarditis, cardiac arrest, shingles, valvulpalsy, Guillain-Barre syndrome, autoimmune disease, multiple sclerosis, neuropathy, paralysis, leprosy, stroke, dementia, brain damage, tinnitus, turbo cancer, DNA integration, deep vein thrombosis, then they tell us they're baffled. Then they tell us they don't know how to fix it. Every day, we research if, as if our lives depend on it, because they do. Because we are the only, because only our loved ones care enough to save us. For some, we're a statistic, a number on a spreadsheet. For others, we don't exist. They don't want us to exist. They refuse to see us. They refuse to hear us. They refuse to fill us. They refuse to help us. Every minute, we scrape together the strength to endure the anguish, to resist the gaslighting, to seek out supplements, procedures, practices, anything that will offer relief, anything that will soften the suffering, anything that will delay our terminal diagnosis. They tell us to shut up. They tell us not to scare others. They tell us it is rare. They tell us it was worth it. No one takes responsibility, not the NGOs that hocus-pocus us, not the corporations that poisoned us, not the governments that coerced us, not the agencies that betrayed us, not the institutions that mandated us, not the tyrants that scapegoated us, not the politicians who maneuvered us, not the psychologists who manipulated us, not the experts who hoodwinked us, not the scientists who head-faked us, not the doctors, not the nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'm sorry, there's no applauding. If we can please keep decorum, we kindly appreciate it. Let's see, we have Ron Grayban.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ron Grayban, 202 Surfside. The other day before the roosters were up, Peter Zanoni was up texting me, and I appreciate that. We know, we've got this going on, reading our newsletter, and I appreciate the comments that he made, and I appreciate him coming on Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, to talk to us. And I really appreciate that, and he always does a great job. They turned the lights on for the first time to test the non-Surfside Park today. It's spectacular. Can't wait to see it at night. And yesterday, I had lunch with the helicopter man, whose name is Jaxx, and so I wanted to reach out and find out a little bit more, and we had a very, very good luncheon, so I just want you to know that. I am here to read a document that was authorized by our, by our board on NBCA. Three NBCA members delivered public comment to the city council on April 16th about the TERS special meeting that had been changed to April the 9th. Our issue that day was the lack of communication that had been done before. Very important decision was made about the money that would be spent and approved by 1.3 million to the developer as an incentive to Tahitaville. Following that city council meeting, Assistant Manager Heather Hubert asked to set up a meeting with NBCA's board at the request of some of the council members, and we appreciate that, to explain the TERS allocation timeline, et cetera. To be clear, the timeline of reimbursement was not the point that we brought to you. We have pretty clear understanding, at least most of us do, as to how the TERS works. Heather came to North Beach in September and gave a whole presentation on the TERS to our members. We understand because we can read. I can read, and we have read the TERS document. What I can't do is read somebody's mind. So there was zero communication between us and our TERS community representative leading up to that very important April 9th meeting, which, during the last TERS meeting held on March 19th, Heather announced that the potential TERS incentive for a helicopter company was coming, which was a surprise to a lot of people because we knew nothing about it. Yet our community representative went on TV and said that it would be a great thing for North Beach, even though we didn't know anything about it. When we pushed back, she said that the North Beach residents were overreacting and jumping to conclusions. NBCA members had planned to attend the April 16th meeting to talk about the helicopter issue, but that meeting got moved up to April the 9th, and we were not notified by anyone. To my knowledge, it would be the community representative that should be the person to do that. So we just need further communication. That's basically what I'm saying. There's some other things that I didn't get to. Maybe I'll come back next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grayban. Arianna Jones?
Can I just add to that, Mayor? That we have added the North Beach Community Association to our correspondence, you know, so anytime we email anything to the council or to the TERS board, the Community Association will be copied on it from now on to help in that communication gap. Is Mr. Grayban, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Arianna?
Hi. Good afternoon, esteemed elected officials. My name is Arianna Jones, and my street address is Kingspoint Harbor Drive. I have been a resident of North Beach my entire life of 24 years tomorrow. I grew up playing at Dolphin Park, building sand castles along the shore, and visiting the Texas State Aquarium. I stand here before you today, representing not only myself as a lifetime resident of North Beach, but for my family of 14, who are also residents of North Beach, seven of them who are lifetime members like myself. I am also here today representing the North Beach Community Association, made up of property owners of North Beach, residents and business owners alike. I have here a letter. Dear elected officials, on April 18th, 2024, the membership of North Beach Community Association met and discussed the topic of the North Beach TERS Representative Board of the Community. Following an in-depth discussion by the membership with 44 members in attendance, the membership voted unanimously to request that the city council expand the criteria of the TERS Number Four Community Representative position to require that the candidates be both a North Beach resident and a North Beach property owner. The motion also included that the representative be a member of the NBCA and attend our meetings, and that the current representative be unseated. The North Beach Community Association was founded in 1996 and is a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization made up of residents, property owners, HOAs, and business owners on North Beach. For the past 27 years, NBCA has held regular monthly meetings, inviting everyone with an interest in improving North Beach to attend. We regularly engage with elected officials, police, parks, code enforcement, and other city staff, including the city manager, who is at our speaker at our April 18th meeting. NBCA's membership formally requests that the TERS Community Representative that is current be unseated due to lack of engagement with our community and due to poor attendance at both TERS board meetings and at NBCA meetings. We have provided a list of names of individuals who have been engaged with our community for years and are both North Beach full-time residents and property owners. We please ask that you choose one of these individuals who are willing to serve as our community representative on this very important board, who decides how our tax dollars are allocated to improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. John Weber?
I will be addressing the mayor and city council regarding the city's proposed desalination plant in the Hillcrest neighborhood. The D cell plant will intake millions of gallons of water every day from the inner harbor. For the bay water to maintain its level, millions of gallons of water a day will have to enter the bay from another source. Much salty water will come in from the Gulf of Mexico. This alone will raise the salinity of the bay. The D cell intake will suck up millions of gallons of water from the bay, as can be seen by this slide. Fresh water will be extracted and put into the city water supply. Very salty wastewater will be discharged into the inner harbor. Millions of gallons will be sucked up by the Nuasis Power Station and dumped in the Nuasis Bay, as can be seen here. Some of the very salty wastewater will be sucked back up by the D cell plant. As anybody that has engaged in a large-scale project like this knows, the cost will likely double, and the time to complete the project will likely double as well. The New Harbor Bridge is just one example of this. There are three possible outcomes if this project is ever completed. Number one, the project is completed and cannot economically be made to function because of how often the pre-filters need to be changed, as well as maintenance issues, not to mention the additional steps needed to make the water drinkable by removing the boron and bromide that reverse osmosis has a hard time removing. Number two, the project at great cost is able to operate, and the water can't be made safe to drink, but can be used by industry. The discharges increase the salinity of the bay, and the fish and other wildlife are impacted. Their health and populations decrease. Number three, the project at great cost is able to operate, and the water can't be made safe to drink, but can be used by industry. The discharges increase the salinity of the bay. Depending on the reservoir storage levels, the city may be forced to make large freshwater releases from its reservoirs to adjust the salinity of the bay, per the Certificate of Adjudication Number 21-3214. By making the required freshwater releases, the city loses millions of gallons a day of inexpensive freshwater. As you can see, none of these three possible outcomes is good for the residents. As always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Sean Flanagan?
Can I wait till they gen items themselves?
Okay. Roseanne Norman? Just your address, Ms. Norman.
Okay, 4629 Monet Drive. I have four children. Two have had adverse reactions to the vaccines. My daughter received all her shots on time. I did everything that the doctors recommended, and she developed autism. When she was two, when most children had about 100 words and putting two words together, she had three. She was very energetic, to put it nicely. She was an escape artist, and I hated getting together with other people's families because their kids were developing normally, and it tore me up inside. Outside, I smiled. I laughed at their children's stories, but inside, I was crying. I'd go home and cry out loud. I didn't know what was wrong or how deep this was going to affect her life. She was vaccine-affected. When she was about four, my second son was, my second was born. He was a boy. He weighed one pound 14 ounces, and he spent three months at Driscoll Children's Hospital. He breezed through that situation, but right before he came home, he developed, they recommended now, he was like a three-month-old, and he had to get all of his shots. So we got all of the shots he got at birth and then at three months, all at the same time, and they sent me home. He began to have seizures, and whenever I reported to the doctor, they said, well, how do you know those are seizures? Well, I'm a special ed teacher, and I can recognize it. I didn't really connect it to the vaccines until the second and the third time. The third time, he said, that definitely is the cause. So the thing is, we play Russian roulette. We don't know who's going to react. We don't know how deep the reactions are going to be. The COVID shot has, and most shots are, take 10 to 15 years to be properly studied before they are approved as effective and safe, and in my case, they weren't either one. So I don't know why we are, again, revisiting the COVID shot because we really don't know at this point who's going to react and how deep the reaction will be. As far as I know, if normal vaccine trials go from 10 to 15 years, there's nothing like that for this shot. And I just think, I just heard, is it for $35,000? Is that what's on the line here? Oh, my goodness. I could probably come up with that. I'm not going to, but I could if I had to. But it's such a minuscule amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. Deborah Williamson?
Do you have a question?
She wants to wait for the item? Okay. Melinda De La Santos?
Good morning. My name's Melinda De La Santos, 611 Gulf Shore Place. The discussion of council members and presentation of several physicians and citizens from last week led me to ask, why are we concerned about COVID vaccine hesitancy? Shouldn't it be obvious at this point? Citizens have provided numerous studies regarding adverse effects. Many of us have been affected by the jab or someone within their circles of family and friends who have been affected. I know there were concerns about money already spent or inability to obtain further grant money. My response is follow the money. We should know by now that government, Big Pharma, and industries have a significant impact and influence on where their money is donated. If not, I can provide research for you all also. Because of your concern about vaccine hesitancy, I did find a study that was done in March of 2024. It was determinants of vaccine hesitancy among African-American and Black individuals in the United States of America. It was a systematic review. The conclusions were mistrust in the healthcare system, fear, and information gaps on vaccine safety and effectiveness, which were the significant barriers. So why aren't we spending money instead to find out about the adverse effects that happened in our community? What lot numbers of the doses were lethal? What types of protocols are out there to assist those affected? Because from research, I am learning injuries from the COVID jab can be divided into several categories from short-term, midterm, and long-term. The lengths of term and adverse overlap with comparison of studies. And you've heard all about the adverse effects. If you tell me you weren't affected, all I can do is tell you, per research, there were three types of doses. One, you had saline solution. Two, had minimal adverse effects. And three, had very lethal effects. And so why are physicians here who presented they were in favor of the COVID vax and other vaccines in general, when Dr. Sashik Peter McCullough, he's a world-renowned physician with three decades of experience, a practicing internist, cardiologist, and epidemiologist in Dallas, Texas, who has written over 1,000 articles and 680 citations in the National Library of Science, Dr. Assima Horta, a leading speaker on the prevention and treatment of heart disease from Britain with numerous medical journal publications and awards, Dr. Mark Prouse, a Canadian veteran, physician and trauma expert who taught at three top medical schools and who has organized 1,000 peer-reviewed articles which show that the COVID-19 vaccines are harmful, along with 17,000 global COVID summit physicians and scientists. They all declare that the COVID experimental genetic therapy injection must end. Their careers, reputation, and medical licenses were at risk. They did not ask to investigate hesitancy. They said it must end. So my conclusion is, why we shouldn't be asking about vaccine hesitancy. We need to be asking, why are so many young people dying? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Santos. Alicia Martin? Alicia Martin?
I'm Dr. Alicia Martin, District 41314, Harbor Lights. I'm a nanoparticle engineer, nanotoxicologist for the better part of two decades. That went by really fast, by the way. And I'm going to give you a really brief summary on how these COVID-19 mRNA vaccinations work. So typical vaccines are injected. They're a live or attenuated virus. They go into the lymph node or the lymphatic system closest to the injection site. You elicit an immune response, and your body learns how to fight this virus. These mRNA vaccines are different. They're using genetic material that's totally synthetic and engineered, resistant to degradation in the body. And they're coated in a lipid nanoparticle. It's a very complex thing. It's not just oil. I've heard people say that. That's like saying that a Cadillac is a lump of metal. It's very complex, engineered to self-assemble. And that's much smaller than a cell. When that's injected into your body, it travels all over the body. So no other vaccines do that. It crosses the blood-brain barrier into the brain. It goes into the heart. It goes into all the vital organs. So I'm going to go ahead and read you a quote from Bob Langer, one of the co-founders of Moderna, from one of his published papers from 2016. It says, "The vital organs, including the liver and lungs, are transfected by mRNA vaccine delivery using lipid nanoparticles. Expression of the antigen, in this case, would be the spike protein by these organs, could recruit T cells and induce tissue damage and inflammation, which we see in myocarditis and cephalitis is another risk of these vaccinations." Let me go on reading. "A first clinical application will likely not be a prophylactic vaccine because the tolerance for side effects is very low in a drug injected into healthy individuals." So there is a use for these, like treatment for cystic fibrosis. This could be a wonderful thing where the benefits outweigh the risk. But now we know in the primary scientific and medical literature that these vaccines induce autoimmunity. So according to the FDA's own guidance for industry on gene therapies, which these are, according to Pfizer and Moderna's own SEC filings, organs transfected include the OVA and the testes. And according to FDA, if something goes to those places, we need to make sure it's not being passed on to future generations. Those studies were never done. Additionally, the FDA guidance for gene therapies requires 10 years surveillance after administration of a gene therapy agent to look for carcinogenesis, which is causing cancer, and to look for autoimmunity. So these things take time to develop. The literature will show you that. It can take years to develop an autoimmunity or years to develop cancer after something. So when you're transfected with this genetic material, your body's going to produce two proteins, not one. One is the spike. The other is a transmembrane anchor protein. And what that does is it acts like a glue, and it glues that spike protein to the surface of all your cells indiscriminately. Cells in your brain, cells in your heart, cells in your kidneys, cells in your lung. Now, we've taught your immune system to attack the spike protein. But wait a minute. All of our cells are now chimeric cells expressing a spike protein. And I apologize for my entire profession if you weren't told that before you took the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Samuel Friar.
I'll wait till the agenda item now.
Okay. Taylor Johnson.
Mayor requests to speak during the agenda item.
Zachary Bornstein.
Mayor, which agenda item was the gentleman wanting to speak on? Mr. Johnson?
Agenda item number three? I believe it's three.
Number four?
Number seven. Thank you.
Okay. It says three, but okay. Taylor Johnson, you said, agenda item? Zachary Bornstein?
Agenda item seven.
Okay. Sissi Saldana?
Sissi Saldana, 4710 Hackel. I just come before you today to tell you that on behalf of the community of Corpus Christi and all of those that can be here, we really want to praise our police officers and the wonderful job they do. We are very, very grateful to have our community come together and have an opportunity to express our thanks to the fallen officer and pray that he gets better. That is one of the issues we wanted to make sure that we got across to you because this is when you can actually see that those people that think of community policing don't think about how strong our need is for police officers, except when things like this happen. The second thing I come to tell you is, you've heard a lot of things about the vaccine, and they all seem to be very dramatic and very forceful. But I tell you, I for one would like to have my own choice of decide whether I take it or not, whether the people that hear it should take it or not. I know that I had COVID after I had the vaccine, and if I hadn't had it, I wouldn't be here. So there are two sides to every story. And I strongly believe that you should advertise and let people know what's going on and let them make the decision. Don't let a few people make the decision but the people that are actually going to make that choice. Those are the people that should make the decision. So there's nothing wrong with advertising or telling them. You hear from a lot of people, and there's a few people. There are a lot more people out there that deserve to make their own decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Saldana. And for clarity, Mr. Friar, you're holding on for item number four.
Yes. The agenda item switched some kind of way.
Right. But it is four. Mr. Bornstein, same thing?
Seven.
Okay, you're number seven, Mr. Bornstein. Okay. And Taylor Johnson?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. Next, we have Kashiq Bakhta.
I'll wait till the...
The item? Kashiq David?
I'll wait for item number seven please. Thank you.
Melody Nixon Brace?
I'd like to also observe until the agenda items.
Item number?
Seven.
Seven. Jason Hale?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jason Hale, and I live at 4421 Hamlin Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas. I will be addressing the mayor and city council regarding the city's proposed desalination plant in the Hillcrest neighborhood. The TCEQ hosted a public meeting last Thursday where they took public comments on the permit for the inner harbor plant. During the meeting, new information was made available regarding the validity of Freese and Nichols' environmental assessment of the inner harbor's outfall. This included two reports from experts in the field who concluded that, one, according to the city's own modeling, brine concentrate discharged from the inner harbor plant will result in a high-density salinity plume; and, two, that this will result in persistent dead zones in the Corpus Christi Bay and inner harbor. The reports were made by Dr. Scott Sokolowski, who is an expert in coremix modeling, and Dr. Ben Hodges, who is an expert in far-field modeling. Both have a long list of credentials, which are included in the Hillcrest Residents Association's public comments. And I have included links to the HRA's comments with this comment on the QR code. Dr. Hodges concludes that, in his opinion, there is no configuration of diffusers and outfall placement in the inner harbor that can avoid development of a far-field stratified effluent plume, hypoxia, and ecosystem harm to the inner harbor and Corpus Christi shipping channel. So before moving forward with the inner harbor plant, I request that you take a look at these reports from these experts, along with the other comments from the HRA, and to seriously consider whether this project is worth continuing development on. Otherwise, valuable city resources may be wasted on an infusable plant location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Edgar Ramírez? That would be item? Seven? Adam Rios?
I thought I was going to be here for a while. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court. Also would like to express my thoughts and my prayers to Officer Kyle Hicks for putting his life on the line to protect this great city. Thank you, mayor, council, and city staff. I'm coming up on just a little over a two-year journey that started with the repurposing of Cole Park. Now we're moving into West Guth. And now on pace, I think, to have other sought-out destinations for skaters all across this great city, our state, and even nationally. Last week, a group of young folks, kids, really, along with their parents, forming the Padre Island, the North Padre Island Stoke Brokers Association, kind of introduced a Hail Mary, if you will, to bring attention to a much-needed skate park on the island, specifically the Commodores Park project. I thought it was really awesome that they came down with their parents. It was kind of a field trip for them because my field trips, growing up, were to Buttercrust, you know? So I think maybe more city field trips should maybe get some kids down to City Hall so they can learn civic duty and civic discourse. In terms of that park, the need and the desire is pretty apparent. There was a bond that was voted on in November '22. In August of '23, feedback was requested via a couple of meetings on the island and an online survey. Well, at that last meeting, which I attended one of them, the last Parks and Rec meeting, it was kind of noted that nothing was really set in stone when they were showing three phases of Commodores Park. Well, those kids, along with their parents, decided that might be a good time to act. So they wrote letters to council. There was an outpour of support from the island community, as well as a couple of business owners out there who don't particularly like the skateboarders and their parking lots because it's kind of unsafe and creates liability. It's just a lack of safe space. Now, when I started this, even starting my company, the idea was, of course, to get skate parks in different communities throughout the city. And we're thankful for everything that's happening so far. But I just want to read a little statement that sort of emphasizes the importance of what these kids are trying to do and what I'm trying to achieve. "We believe that every skate park is the result of a partnership between youth, government, and local civic organizations. In spite of rough edges that skateboarders may appear to have, they often prove to be incredible advocates for the things that are important to them. And the long process of a skate park development is transformative, not just for the skateboarders, but for the agencies and individuals who work with them." One of the reasons I touched on last week of why I particularly like skate parks is the low maintenance that comes from having a safe place to skate. Oh, that was it? Oh, okay. Low maintenance, low maintenance, low maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. And we have Daryl Genzer?
I'd like to hold for the agenda item seven.
Okay. Councilwoman Campos?
I think there's, at least I know of, one person that signed up, and it's not on the list. Yeah. I don't know if you wanted to acknowledge the person or if that person can come up and they're allowed to make their public comment?
Yeah. I'm sorry we weren't informed of someone having an issue.
I personally was told when I was, Councilwoman Hernandez was speaking to me. They were telling me at the same time that they had just signed up. So, and I checked on the list, and I didn't see them. But they are here, and they are a resident of Corpus Christi. Would they be allowed to go ahead and speak?
Who's the person?
Liz.
Rebecca, do you want to speak with her? See what the situation was?
Sure. Am I legal?
I think you need to just check in with Rebecca.
Yeah, she's going to, she would like to speak about an agenda item, agenda item number four. And she's a city resident. And she just wasn't aware of the signup requirements.
Well, I don't think...
So it wasn't a technical issue, is my understanding.
Right. No, I think she did, or her husband signed up.
It's okay.
Okay, I promise you, I would much rather be...
Yeah, and it's fine. The reason I asked you to speak with Rebecca is so that if there was an issue with signing up...
Yeah, with the technology.
Sometimes technology, you know, gives us some issues. So go ahead. You're very happy to, very welcome to make your public comment. If you'll state your name and address, please.
I am here to talk, I am pro-vaccine.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, if you'll...
Elizabeth Whitehurst, 3501 Aransas, Corpus Christi, Texas.
Thank you.
I've been a nurse at Driscoll for, I probably took care of many of your children. I probably took care of your children and your grandchildren. Admittedly vaccinator. I know most of you will turn on the TV, and you've seen the St. Jude Children's Hospital. And we give the St. Judes. We don't think about it. There was a time when we asked parents to put lethal poisons into children's veins to cure childhood leukemia. And it was frightening, much like COVID is today. But people took that risk. And now children who are dying from childhood leukemia has been decreased by 95%. And it's because we study things. And we're given the gift of money to study things. So we're coming up here, and 2/3 of those risk factors associated with vaccine that was listed is listed with Ozempic. How many of us are putting Ozempic in our body these days? Or many medicines. Medicine is a risk ratio factor. And we're given money to reduce that risk ratio. And it just seems like looking a gift horse in the mouth. Now, two years of... Now, two years ago, we lost a wonderful gentleman, one of the first medical directors of St. Jude Children's Hospital that worked at Driscoll Children's Hospital, Donald Pinkel. He died at 93 years of age from recurrence of polio. He had polio as a child. Had he never received, had it never been studied, had it never been given, one of the great innovators of childhood leukemia would not be in the world today. We have to refuse money to study how to make our children, our grandchildren's lives better just baffles me. I'm, I'm speechless. And maybe that's why I didn't sign in. Again, I don't know. But to not accept this money, to study this, I just would have to understand how you justify that to a mother with leukemia, cystic fibrosis. Today, we're curing muscular dystrophy. How many remember Jerry's Kids? Do you remember Jerry's Telton? We've cured muscular dystrophy. There is a cure for muscular dystrophy. Now, everybody has a horror story. We all have a familial horror story. Autism. That's been beaten to death statistically. But I just please ask you to take the money and study this. You know, it's a gift. We're given a gift to study this. And I would always come back and want to ask you, why didn't we? Why did we tell Donald Pinkel, "Don't study leukemia. We know enough about it"? You know, that's absurd to ask anybody to put that toxic chemical in their system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitehurst. Okay, that will conclude our public comment. So with that, we will move on to item I, which is the consent agenda. Items three through six, council members. Do you, does anyone have an item to pull?
Item four.
Item number four. Any other items? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve. Yes, sir. Sure. Let's pull it then. Okay. Item number five. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items numbers four and five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Oh, goodness, I forget. Please submit your vote. Oh, you know what? Before we do that, I didn't ask for the, do we have any requests from the public to pull an item? Items four and five. Right, four and five were pulled. Okay, there being no request, we'll go ahead and submit. Where do you submit our vote? Okay, so the vote carries. Item number four is an ordinance repealing the January 3rd City Council approval of ordinance number 033276, which approved the acceptance of $75,000 of a PAVE grant. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'm there.
Are you done?
Yeah. Okay, I know I pulled it, but I'd like to hear from the public, all the comment first. So I'm going to withdraw that and then I'll leave my comments till afterward.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll start with Mr. Sean Flanagan again.
My name is Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street. These are my own thoughts. I've passed out to you a copy of DHA, Department Health Science Services Rider 40, enacted by HB 1 in 2023 legislative session prohibiting the promotion or advertising of COVID-19 vaccinations. This, on its face, since it went into effect one January, basically renders moot the PAVE grant. It should never have been asked for. However, that's not what I wish to draw your attention to. I wish to draw your attention to is how overwhelming had to be the scientific data that showed that COVID-19 vaccinations were indeed no longer safe nor effective, nor that also the presence of highly effective therapeutic treatments for these diseases ending the requirements for COVID-19 vaccinations. Think about that. DHS is in the deal of doing vaccinations. They like pharmaceutical money. Prohibiting the advertisement or promotion of a particular vaccine means the side effects and the effects of that vaccine or effectiveness must have been particularly ineffective and bad. Now, when I was in the Army, right after Vietnam, almost every senior NCO I served with had been multiple tours in Vietnam. Two of them had very bad episodes of PTTs that resulted in them being removed from the Army. That was a result of what they did in Vietnam that they might have thought was good at the time, but wasn't good. Now, if you're a medical administrator and you have prescribed these vaccinations for thousands of folks, including the people you love, how receptive are you going to be to getting information that shows what you thought was doing something good has actually very serious side effects? You need to reexamine your espousal of these vaccinations. How would you likely accept that? Psychologically, that's very difficult, as I saw with the fellows I served with. Reassessment of what you did at one time you thought was good and now the scientific data is showing that it's not good. And it's so overwhelming that the Texas DHS is forbidding the promotion or advertisement of this vaccination. Think about that. And also think about the situation where you have people commanding in the field, so to speak, in the Health Department that are refusing to look at the side effects, the serious side effects and ineffectiveness of this vaccine, and they are leading our citizens in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Deborah Williamson.
Deborah Williamson, 25 Rock Creek Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas. First, I want to apologize for my, you know, outburst in calling people liars, et cetera. And I under, and so, I mean, that was the last meeting. I apologized to all here who were the doctor and so on. That, I still don't agree with what's going on with this shot. And I think it's really evil. And Ms. Saldana, of course, of course, everybody has the right to the shot. That's not the issue. It's that, it's that this is a really, as the doctor got up and said, this is a highly technical thing that goes into your body, glues you, glues this thing to coming to your testes, your ovaries, all this stuff. So, I mean, that's real. And I understand, thank God, for the research that's done. This is not a leukemia drug. This is a DOD invention, Department of Defense made-up thing. And I know you want to call me crazy or whatever. It doesn't matter. The reality will come out. But many people are injured and we shouldn't promote it. Yes, everybody has the right to take. This is America and we have the right to take the shot. But I'm totally against this. I hope you, again, approve repeal of this money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Samuel Friar.
Good afternoon. Samuel Andre Friar, 78414, District 4. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Hernandez, Plusley, Hunter, Mayor Guajardo, and Councilman Roy for voting to repeal this plot to circumvent state law. You saw clearly through the public health district's efforts to conflate mRNA gene therapy injections with all other vaccines by calling nine people, seven of whom were doctors, including pediatricians, to boast of the public health benefits of immunization while ignoring the 60-to-1 harm-to-benefit ratio of mRNA injections. Given that, I ask you to stay the course and vote yea to repeal the grant today. I specifically remember a psychiatrist who, quote, "witnessed the profound impact of preventable diseases on children and families." He went on to state that, "As a psychiatrist, I understand the power of fear to cloud judgment and inhibit rational decision-making." Now, since he didn't look older than 77 years old, assuming that he has not been in a third-world country that's suffering from diseases uncommon to the United States, by deduction, he must have been referring to the novel coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2, that caused the disease. Now, because it's new, he was conflating the reaction, the extreme mandates, restrictions on gathering, mask requirements, business closures, fear mongering by videos and pictures of depicting full hospitals and people, dead people in body bags. And may we not forget the isolation of the sick whose family members were prevented from being at their bedside while they suffered and while they died from lack of effective treatment. Yes, fear does cloud judgment. It inhibits rational decision-making. Now, why were medical professions forced to take mRNA injections to maintain their jobs? Why were doctors forced to follow CDC protocols to treat COVID? And why were doctors terminated for actually using FDA-approved medicines like hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin to treat these? Well, Edward Dowan made this particular point on a Telegram post. He said, "Protocols instituted in 2020 were designed to kill people to get COVID numbers inflated." Hospitals were incentivized to identify patients of having COVID. They got money to put patients on ventilators. They got money for remdesivir. And they got money for death. So why, when you design incentives, you get the results you want. We need to stop the coerced use of we, the people, as guinea pigs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friar. I think that's all the public comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close that. And, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Campos. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Barra, for pulling the item. If it wasn't going to be you, it's going to have to be me. You know, apparently, this has hit some buttons here. And it's sad that it has come to this, that we, as city, representing the city, are refusing to accept a $75,000 grant. This is a grant for educating the public about not just COVID-19 vaccinations, but all vaccinations. And what I'm looking at as a lens, we're over 300,000 people in this city. And we're always complaining about how professionals don't like, you know, are not attracted to our city to... And then, I mean, you wonder why. I mean, when we are looking at refusing money and then listening from the medical community, I mean, these, and I'm the one that called. I mean, I know that there's comments that, you know, it was Dr. Khan, but it was me. I'd made those calls. And yes, I thought that it was important that we hear from the medical society. Yes, we all have our opinions, but I thought it was important that we actually hear from the professionals. So again, you know, we want to attract, you know, professionals to Corpus Christi. Well, how are we going to, you know, attract when we have, you know, a certain amount of people that are able to influence some members here, a small percentage, that feel that any information or all information should be limited because of their beliefs? You know, they proclaim that, you know, this is about democracy and all that. But really, you're trying to limit the, you know, these individuals are trying to limit information and limit democracy. So, of course, I will be voting nay on this. And I hope my colleagues, along with my, well, just, I'll say my colleagues, will support me and the community and hopefully that we can get past this and move on. Because what we're all trying to do here is protect our community. That's it. I mean, and you don't, you don't have to take the vaccination if you don't. But thank God that we do have some protocols. I know, you know, when I was young, I actually had tuberculosis. It was something that was prevalent, you know, where we lived because my uncle had been exposed and it ended up that myself and my younger brother, we ended up at Driscoll for months because we had to be treated. And even now, I cannot take that shot because it'll always come out positive. So I am grateful that we have the science and that we know what we need to do. And yes, it may not be perfect. It never is, medical, I'm sorry, but the medical profession is, again, it's not a perfect science. It's not. But we're human beings and we should, you know, be open-minded and not be fearful. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Suckley. Oh, sorry.
Thanks, mayor. Just reiterating, I'll again be voting the same as I did last week. I do appreciate your answers last week. My facts that I stated last week are the same basis for me voting the same way today. And that is your confirmation that this has nothing to do with COVID going forward, that this, your education and information to the community is about all vaccines for our community. So, again, I don't think we did a good job of messaging from the very beginning of when this was first presented to us. And unfortunately, it's going to cost the city some money for one step forward, two steps backwards. But in the end, I'm going to stick with the facts that I know and I understand. 95% of the people that have come up and talked to us, it's been about COVID, it's been about the concerns and the side effects of COVID, and I get that. And I understand, and I also have some concerns about the COVID. But again, the basis for the usage of the money for the grant is for all vaccines that will benefit people in our community, including influenza and others. And so that's the reason I'll continue to vote the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Barra.
All right, I'm going to apologize in advance for probably how long I may talk. What is it? And I guess, basically, what's compelled me to speak is candidly, is the correspondence of what I've received that's encouraged me to change my vote, which I'm not. So I'll start with that. A couple of things that I'm going to go, and I do have just a comment that I'd like, I'll have some follow-up for you. So, you know, I'm in the, I'm in the industry providing employee benefits, of which the majority is administering medical benefits for employers. And the biggest, one of the biggest challenges that we face here in the coastal bend is access to care. Access to care, access to understanding how, what's the best way to get that care? Access to understanding the availability of care and access to understand the importance of getting preventive care. And, I mean, we deal with that on a daily basis. In a community that, and I can't remember the stats, but I remember at one time... In a community that, and I can't remember the stats, but I remember at one time, Corpus Christi, if you went south of San Antonio, and it was its own state, it would be ranked 51st with regard, or first, whichever one you say, with regard to the prevalence of diabetes. And a lot of that is through lifestyle choices. And I use the word "choices" that I've learned very delicately because, once again, it's the access to understanding that care. And, and Dr. Khan, I say that, so this is, once again, I just want to reiterate, is this is just for us to follow through with what is the barrier to care or receiving these vaccines that we're obviously targeting a certain demographic of the community. Can you confirm that for me? That's basically what this is for?
Yes, sir. This grant is to get information and provide education on vaccines.
Okay, and I want to say that, how it's important. Obviously, I mentioned earlier, being involved with the Texas Association of Mexican-American Chambers of Commerce, highly organization that is prevalent with regard to individuals that don't have access to care. And I'll give some anecdotal information and some facts. As I'd indicated before, the region and that demographic are probably higher with regard to cases of hyperlipidemia, hypertension, diabetes, you know, and in the, in the, the house where I grew up, if I still live there, or when I lived there, my life expectancy, I was two blocks from Moody High School, what, about four blocks from where Sylvia lived? You know? And the, my life expectancy was 77 years old, right? Then I moved to, a little bit closer to the South Side with the help of my father, who co-signed for me at the age of 19. Just by, just by moving to a different zip code, my life expectancy went to 80. Now, today, I live in, you know, I say humbly in a more affluent area, a different zip code, and my life expectancy is 82 years old. And the reason being is, once again, it's the access to that, to that understanding and being able to make informed choices about whether, whether or not you want to have access to that care. In District Three, and I've been very vocal about this because I've said that District Three had the largest amount of confirmed cases back when we were able to track them, when we were administering them. And that number I requested was 109,855 cases. District Three also had the highest number of fatalities related to COVID-19, which was One of those individuals, my father-in-law, he, he, and I talk about the culture, because he said, "I'm going to be okay. I'm going to be okay." I remember getting on his case and saying, "You can't go get a haircut, Gilbert. You can't, you can't go to HEB, Gilbert." And he was in his 80s. I think he was 88 when he passed. And very independent man, you know, still drove, you know, rancher, farmer, what is it, retired from AEP as a meter reader. First generation, raised three children, and all went to college. Never knew his, never knew his mother. And that man had a culture of taking care of his family. And one of the mistakes that we made was, and I, you know, and I know you apologized for it the other day, but I listened to you. I have his blood on my hands because I didn't, we didn't take him, we didn't call an ambulance. We said, "We'll take care of it." We were trying to get him. I should have, we should have, we should have called an ambulance. Instead, we took the same culture of ideas, the idea that, okay, so we took him to a freestanding emergency room, of which he was there for probably about 48 hours. And we finally got him transferred to hospital. He ended up dying alone because we couldn't see him. When we had the funeral, there was only those of us that were very close to him, and he's buried, and he was a, he was a proud veteran, served in the Korean War. And we buried, we, he's laid to rest at the Veterans Hospital. My father did not die of COVID, but I given, I give an example of the culture. My father, who, coincidentally, was actually born in a neighborhood that is where we sit today, where City Hall sits, there was a neighborhood here, and my father was born here on this plot of land. My father died at 75 years old from a heart attack. He was about 160 pounds, he was in great shape. He would take the kids, what is it, he would ride his bike to school with the kid, with the kid, my, his grandchildren, my children, and then, what is it, he would, what is it, leave them there, their bikes, and then he'd ride back home. He was in very good shape and never went to the doctor, never went to the doctor, never thought any reason to go to the doctor, never got any preventive care. And we lost him, in fact, this was the, so we're 2024, the 23rd anniversary of his death on April 14th. And when he was feeling those pains, he said, "I'm going to be okay." Same thing, "I'm going to be okay." And what we did is, I finally convinced him, and we said, "We're going to go to the emergency room." And remember, it was Holy Saturday. And so we took him to the emergency room, they put an EKG on him right away, and we took him to Spahn South, and they said, "He's having a heart attack right now." And so they immediately called, and they got an ambulance, what is it, and took him to Spahn Shoreline, the heart hospital. All this probably took about a period of about three hours. And every day, I regret not calling an ambulance because of the culture, because of the culture of which I was raised in, the Latino machismo to be able to take care of your family. I still think about it. So now, every time any little bitty thing happens to my mother, we've called the paramedics. In fact, and she's 91 years old, still very vibrant, still independent, what is it, three different times, we've called the paramedics, and even then, of course, Medicare covers it, but there shouldn't be any reason to hesitate. And all these men, by the way, they were covered by Medicare. It wasn't a cost prohibitive. So, I look at it from that perspective. It's, I can tell you, what is the barrier to care? My brother, by the way, is a retired pediatrician, you know, of which he's obviously very passionate. And this disease, obviously, is nondiscriminatory, but there's a culture that, where we need to give individuals that ability to be able to choose yes or no. And mind you, I've, my brother-in-law, even though his father died from COVID, he refuses to take the vaccine, of which we've had spirited discussions about, but he's informed. I know, I made sure he's informed, and I've tried to share with him the other way. And, and I think some of the challenges that we come in, we deal with, is unfortunately, which, it just shocks me, you know, political ideology has been inserted into this. And, you know, and, you know, I don't know whether any of, any of the individuals that have supported, or Republican or Democrat, or whatever the case is, but you can't deny that political ideology is inserted into this, and those, and that's part of, that makes it very difficult to make a decision based on the experts. I mean, here, just recently, I looked up here on the CDC, and it says here, and so that's how I try to make these informed decisions because of what we've been through. You know, it says right here, "Updated COVID-19 vaccine boosts waning immunity." All right? And this was a periodical that came out in February of '24. "The virus that causes COVID-19 will continue to evolve. Updated COVID-19 vaccine protects against many variants. Since protection from prior infections and vaccinations decline over time, stay up to date on vaccines. Get vaccinated today." So, anyway, I just, and, you know, when I go into this political ideology, the thing that shocks me is, you know, I'm obviously not a fan of Donald Trump, but he was the one that moved forward with Operation Warp Speed because of this pandemic that we had. So this is very personal, and I've done my research. I've done my research, and I know what the barriers are facing, and in my instance, the Latino community, the minority community, whether it be culture, it's not, has nothing, the, 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 the disease is nondiscriminatory. It's the, getting the information out. So I just felt compelled to share all that with everybody because I wanted them to know that I've done my research. I've done my research, and not for the purpose of pushing forward a narrative, and just for the fact of keeping people informed, and that's what this grant is for. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to be very specific here, and to say something that where Councilman, Councilwoman Camps and Councilman Suckley had mentioned about this particular PAVE grant. It says, "The $75,000 award for this PAVE grant," from their website, from the PDF that actually states it, "This is for communication campaign to strengthen COVID-19 and influenza uptake, specifically activity designed to identify communities at risk for low COVID-19 and influenza vaccine uptake." Was also mentioned, one of our public comments, that this was from the General Appropriations Act for House Bill One, Article Two, Rider Number 40, and this is from the Department of, Texas Department of Health and Human Services Advisory. "COVID-19 vaccines should not be singled out from other vaccines listed alone or otherwise listed in a manner meant to promote or advertise COVID-19 vaccines." Are you familiar with this?
Rider 40, yes.
Okay, so I was really perturbed last week when we had several doctors come in and try to conflate COVID-19 vaccine with other vaccines. No one is saying that you should not take any other vaccine, right? I was a United States naval officer and served overseas, both in Asia and in the Persian Gulf. I probably got more vaccines than most people I know, right? Every time we got sent over somewhere, they identified the locations over there, we got a full set of vaccines. No one's against all vaccines. This is specific to the COVID-19 vaccine. This particular grant is, and I'll read it again, "Communications campaign to strengthen COVID-19 and influenza uptake." Okay, this is counter to what our, our state has told us we cannot do and we should not do. And unless there is some written documentation from NACHO that states that specifically to us, that we can use this for anything but COVID-19, then we should be fine, but I asked that last week, and that did not exist. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilman, for that. So there are two components for this grant. Number one is the survey, and the second is the communication plan. We have written approval from NACHO that we can open the survey to all general community population that we did. We also have in written that we have the flexibility to include all ACIP recommended vaccines for age-appropriate vaccines, and I have here for you.
So, Dr. Khan, that is written, that's written confirmation from NACHO?
Yes, sir.
That we talked about last week, but you didn't have it in writing, but now you have it in writing?
Yes, sir. We have the, in writing, that we have the flexibility to include additional ACIP recommended vaccines.
Okay. Does it, did they say in writing that you cannot do COVID but other vaccines with the grant monies?
Sir, COVID is an ACIP recommended vaccine. They didn't say that you cannot do COVID. It's all age-appropriate vaccines.
Okay.
Okay, so in reading this, and I wish we would have gotten this in advance, Peter?
I'm not sure, when, when did you get that, Dr. Khan?
Sir, today.
Just this morning?
Yes.
We just got it this morning, Councilman, sorry. Yeah. I haven't even seen it.
Okay, so it says, "For, for the communications plan, PAVE targets adults aged 19 and above emphasizing COVID-19 influenza and influenza vaccines. Therefore, communication plan must encompass that target population. You have the flexibility to include ACIP recommended vaccines for adults." Can you say, can you state what ACIP means?
It's Advisory Committee for Immunization Practice.
Okay, regarding the city council situation, Rider 40 applies to Texas Department of Health and, and its contractors using appropriate funds. Okay, does not affect funds from other sources such as a federal, oh, it is a federal grant. Okay, so that was not stated, that it was from NACHO, which was, is NACHO a federal organization?
No, sir. Last time, we did talk about, NACHO is a national organization, but this money is coming from CDC. We did talk about it. Councilman Pusley brought it up last time.
So it's a federal grant given to the CDC that was, is filtered through NACHO?
Yes, sir. But we have to talk about ACIP recommended vaccines.
Okay, but they're still looking for emphasizing COVID-19 and influenza vaccines as per their note here.
No, sir. It says, "The communication plan must encompass that target population." Because it was 19 and above, we need to include that population. And there are lots of vaccines, just like tetanus, shingles, pneumovax. Our pneumovax rates are really low for adult population. So what it's asking us, that we need to include that target population as we talk about ACIP recommended vaccines.
Okay, do you see the, the kind of situation you put us in here, Dr. Khan?
Sir, help me understand.
Okay, so you asked for a vaccine, a grant from NACHO that's focused on COVID-19 when we were kind of, in the sense, from our state legislature, not supposed to promote the COVID-19 vaccine, and this one specifically promotes it or calls it out by itself. And you're correct, the, the, the rider bill specifically states, "Anything from the general fund, revenue fund from the Department of State Health and Services, and specifically use for the purpose of promoting and advertising the COVID-19 vaccines." However, it still gave you the guidance that you should not do them individually from the Department of Health Services, right?
Sir, we follow Rider 40, and we respect DSHS, and we have so many grants from DSHS that we would not want to go against DSH. And also, if we put an ad out, it doesn't matter which, where the money is coming from, so we would not be promoting COVID-19 exclusively. We are going to promote all ACIP recommended vaccines.
Which includes COVID. Which includes the COVID vaccine, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Camps?
Thank you, Dr. Khan. And yes, it is sad that you, you know, that we just got this information or that it was, you know, that we received it, but I think I understood it from the very beginning that it was a federal grant. Why it was focused on just the COVID-19, the NACHO, and all this, I don't understand. But I do understand this, that there is a sentiment, the, and it's, this is, I mean, I, I just Googled, you know, about vaccinations for measles, you know, there's this trend that is happening in the United States that it's, we are now looking at measles now as an outbreak because people are not vaccinating their children. I mean, this is, this is serious, you know, this is getting to the point where it's affecting all children, all people's walks of life, and, and it's this kind of fear mongering that, that is starting to, you know, affect policy here. I mean, I understand that we have, you know, two, two different parties, and we have two ways of how we see policy, but at the end of the day, we're all human beings, and we all have to figure out or decide, you know, who are we actually working for? We're working for the community. I mean, what is the best thing for the community? So, again, thank you again for, for being here, for being present, and, and for just answering, you know, these questions, and hopefully now, maybe we can all agree and vote nay on this.
Councilman Klein?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Khan, for coming back in this week. I voted against repeal of this PAVE grant. I think this is a very good idea. I think that we should be following scientists on this and medicine, the medical experts as well. I also want to make this comment very briefly, very quickly as well. There's a couple of mentions last week, and again, this week as well, to the VARS data, V-A-R-S data. I would caution, issue a caution about using the VARS data. It is unvetted and unverified. It is unvetted and unverified. It is an open source document and I would just recommend that people give second thoughts to using that data because as I said, its reliability, I think, is in question at this point. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Pusley?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to say, Councilman Brer, I'm very sorry about your dad. You know, I lost my dad five years ago and nothing has ever impacted me in my lifetime as seriously as losing my parents. My mom's been dead over 23 years. She died from leukemia. My dad passed away when he was 90 and I spent the last two years of his life living with him so I could care for him. So I understand where you come from. I also think, Councilman Brer, you will agree that the decisions and votes I've taken as a member of this council have not been predicated on my political party. And I take great offense at Councilman, for making that statement. I don't, this is not a Democrat-Republican issue and for Councilwoman Campos to accuse us of doing that is inexplicably wrong. Anyway, it's interesting that we now have this letter because if you remember last week, Dr. Khan, I asked, I asked you at least three times if you had gotten permission from the people administering this grant, permission to change the scope of what you were doing. And you would not answer that question and I finally said, well, I'll take that as a no. And now all of a sudden this morning at 10:30, and I don't, I don't have any idea who Denzel is.
He's my PHA. He's the Health Department, Public Health Administrator. This grant is under him.
Does he work for the city?
Yes, he does work for the city.
Then why weren't we given this, or why weren't we informed that you were going to be accessing this information? Doesn't matter, answering that question won't change my mind. I still believe that, and I'm not here to defend Donald Trump either, but I know that in the final days of his administration, he had completely changed his opinion about the information he had received when the COVID pandemic first started. So this is about making the correct decision and I don't think $75,000 is going to change whether or not we solve the COVID problem in this country or not. I encourage people, when the COVID vaccine came out, to take the vaccine, but I regret that now because I've seen too many side effects affect people, especially people my age and older. And we're giving these vaccines without asking their age, what kind of medications they take, what kind of illnesses they've had, what kind of responses they've had to other vaccines. And, you know, there's a whole host of things that we're not doing related to this, but I don't think our $75,000 grant's going to solve those problems. But I think this needs to be a personal decision that people make in concert with their respective physicians and it shouldn't be something we should be out telling people. And I also have a real steadfast resistance to us doing studies where we're going to report this information back to the federal government for them to use under some guideline that we are not aware of yet. So there's just a whole lot about this. If you remember when this first came to the council, I pulled it off the consent agenda and said I had questions about it then. I voted against it then and I have voted against it every time because I just don't think it's something we should be doing. This should be left in the hands of people above us. So I appreciate your, everything that you do. I told you last week, I think you do a great job and we're very lucky to have you here. So, but this is one thing that you and I'll just have to agree to disagree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Pusley. With regards to your question last time, I did mention that we had open lines of communication with the grantor. We had been talking to them when they had provided technical assistance and webinar. And yes, I could not pinpoint an exact date and time and we have emails from before as well where the grantor was okay with us changing the population for our survey. And thank you, just like you said, vaccination is a choice and that is what we are doing. We are just educating the people. That's it.
Oh, hold on.
Frustrating.
There it goes.
But, but, so to go back to it, I asked specifically, three times that I know of, did you have permission from NACHO to change the parameters of what you were doing with this grant? And you said, we're in communication with them. And I asked you, I said, is that a yes or a no? And you said, we're in communication with NACHO. So I still take it to mean that until you got this, you didn't have a yes or no. So, and I don't want to argue about that, okay? It's water under the bridge. So, and I'm not here to try to embarrass you or anybody else. But I just think that it's important for us to understand that the state has also said, we're not supposed to be doing this. And you just said that this letter gives you permission to go out and talk about all of the, what's the acronym?
ACIP recommended.
ACIP, which includes the COVID vaccine.
Sir, when we applied for this grant, Rider 40 passed later last year. We had already applied for this grant way before then and that is why we made the changes as required.
But the fact that you did that prior to, doesn't, doesn't change the fact that we have a new law. So, look, you can give that back to Councilwoman Campos. I've seen the, I don't need, I don't need your help with this. Please, Mayor, I have the table, I think.
You do.
I'm sorry. I don't need your help. So anyway, we now have a law on the books about how we're supposed to do this and I think we need to honor that. So thank you.
Councilman Roy?
No, I'm not turning at all. Maybe I'm, I'm just not understanding here because what I, what I read, and I want to read this, and I don't, and I wish the public had a copy of this letter here. But the part that I'm really looking at is it says, therefore, the communications plan must encompass the target population. So that what that tells me is that your original target population, which was the LBG, TQ and African-American community, right? That you still need to continue to target that population. But it also, if I'm reading this correctly, it doesn't say, it says next, that you have the flexibility to include. It doesn't say that you have the flexibility to no longer study the impact of COVID in the African-American or LBG, TQ community. What it says is you have the flexibility to include other additional ACIPs. So they're not saying that, and that's been part of the problem, that was stated last week and this week, in my opinion, is that two things. Whether or not, you know, with the state mandate that you could go out and solicit COVID. Excuse me, I asked the question that, what is your benchmark? How are you going to prove that your study is successful in terms of accomplishing your goals, right? Excuse me. And I didn't really get an answer on that. So what this is really telling me is that you have the ability to go out, just like we knew last week, and solicit a different, the same group across the board, educating them and talking to them about all immunizations, but including COVID. It doesn't say that you eliminate having that conversation with them about COVID, right?
So we are going to talk about all age-appropriate vaccines and we always ask people to go, if they have any additional conditions, to talk to their providers.
Yeah, I just don't see anything changing from this letter that wasn't already established last week. I think it's exactly kind of what you said, that you said, oh, I've got some leeway, I can go out and talk to them about additional vaccinations. That's great. That's not the issue. I don't think this changes the issue at all. So, thank you.
Request timer. Everyone's had a chance to speak.
Rebecca, where are we on that, please?
Ma'am, what was the question?
Request a timer.
Okay, so everyone has spoken except for you, Mr. Hunter and the mayor.
If they speak again.
Right. So Councilwoman Campos has spoken twice. And I've timed the rest, but she has spoken twice, if it's, if that's.
Hold on, I don't.
Well, yes, they've been under five minutes except for Mr. Barera, which he, which he, which he stated upfront that he was transparent about that.
Thank you. Okay, with that said, we're going to go ahead and, well, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve item number, item number four. Councilman?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait a minute.
Yes, hang on. Press your light, Councilman.
If we approve the item, that means we're accepting the grant.
No.
No, because it's on consent. It was pulled.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please submit your votes. Okay, the motion carries. Item number five, Councilman Pusley.
Yes. I'm sorry. Okay, Ernie, thank you. Ernie, I always, I get a little nervous when we are spending this much money and we only got one bid. Is this, do these guys have the market cornered on cement or do we have any other?
Yes, Councilman. Ernie Delagarza, Director of Public Works. We sent out a notification to a lot of individuals. This is the only supplier here in Corpus Christi for bulk cement. They're located at the Port of Corpus Christi.
Right.
And everybody purchases from them.
Okay, we, so, okay, and I typically am a champion of using local talent, for sure. But, okay, I'm good. Thank you very much. I motion, we approve, Your Honor.
One more comment, Councilman Klein?
Yeah, yeah, I just echo Mike's comments. I have concerns about South Texas cement having a monopoly on cement production in the area here. I understand that's the situation we're faced with. Do you have a sense of how, what the next closest cement plant is? Obviously, there's going to be an issue of practicality. If it's 150 or 200 miles away, that's not going to be very efficient. You're going to eat all your time, all your money up in transporting it.
Right. So what I understand, Councilman, is that this cement does come, I believe it's Turkey, but Josh can correct me on that, but they, they go from there and they supply the bulk cement to all of the ready-made suppliers. And so anybody that's using cement, whether in ready-made materials or what we're using it for, just reclaiming, will come from that one location.
So beyond South Texas cement, what would you say is the next nearest cement?
I know there's, there's some, like in Austin area, I think it's Lehigh, I believe it is. We can get you that specific information.
Yeah, I just wanted, it's impractically far.
I'm sorry?
It's impractically far away.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Yeah, right, thank you, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Did you do the motion?
The motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, please submit your votes. Okay, the motion carries. We're going to go ahead and go to item, to our individual consideration items, number seven, and after that, we'll go ahead and break for lunch. Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the Type B Corporation and Elevate QOF LLC. Mr. Culberson?
Good morning. Mike Culberson from your Corpus Christi Regional EDC. Let me bring up the thing really quick if I can. I don't know if I can get rid of this. Can I get rid of that? Can I get rid of that? Ah, there we go. Ah, somebody's doing it for me. Maybe. Nope, that's not mine. Thank you, though. For Homewood Suites. There you go, sir. All right, so Homewood Suites had approached the EDC and brought us a, an application. We worked through it and it went through our board for recommendation to the Type B. The Type B selected to do $2 million and they did it for the catalytic, for the catalytic nature of the, of the area. Let me ask you, what were you doing in 2012? In 2012, the city started working on Chaparral Street from William, which is now Lomax, to Lawrence, and it was going to be done in six months. And in May of 2014, they opened one lane. Until then, everything else closed. And I'll give you an idea. So Bourbon Street, Porky's, Sonia's, Stinger's, Betty's, Trezor's, they all closed. And how many have reopened? How much, how much activity has been on that side? Nothing, nothing for 14 years. So here is a chance that the Type B saw. They did it based on not FEMA, not any of that other stuff, but the catalytic nature of this. And there are other, there are other programs that have done, and the city has done and Type B has done, that match into that to move this forward. The city, for example, did a tax abatement for Cosmopolitan and it brings hundreds of people downtown. Because one thing we found out, especially in the EDC, is younger generations tend to want to be downtown. The, the DMD itself finished a survey and it talked about this. It talked about having to be downtown. They tend to stay in apartments longer, even when they're married, they stay in apartments. It's not until they have kids do they actually move out into a single family. Two years ago, we were talking about our Quality of Place project study and one of the council members said, and we were saying, we need 2,000 residents downtown. And, and he asked, how can you get 2,000 houses downtown? I mean, there's, there's a disconnect and I get it, you know, I was born in '57, so, but I do understand the need to make downtown a catalyst. Right now, when I come across the bridge heading south, I come in and hit on Taylor Street, right? Now there's this weird turn, but anyway, I end up on Taylor Street. Where's the, where's the bridge dump you off now? Where's the new bridge going to dump you off? It's going to dump you off at Crosstown. And there's this 270 that you do and you come on down. Now they'll keep what's left of 37 and take you down to the bayfront, but it'll take you. So this is based on catalytic force of that. We went through it. Now, when we do economic impact models, we do impact, we do jobs, we do investment, we do how much money's going to come back. And we came back with a number and our board came back with a number. The Type B decided to move up to $2 million. But I want you to understand that there is an AG opinion that they said, we understand, because there was a question on whether a Type A at the time could do a economic impact. And so as long as it's properly done, it's properly in the guidelines, which it, which it is, the Type B can determine economic development and do whatever. You, as a council, can choose to take, take the $2 million. You can say no to it or you can lower it. So, any questions? I can certainly go through it or whatever, but.
Yeah. Councilwoman Campos?
Let me see, let's see. You just mentioned that there was a study done that we, we needed like 2,000 residents.
Yes, and it was our study, it was the Quality of Place.
And you mentioned Cosmopolitan. Do you remember, it was before my time, so do you remember how much of an incentive they had received?
They received 100% during construction for two years and then 50% for six years.
Do you know what that amounted to?
Hmm, I would have to figure that out, but 20 million, call it 10, divided by 100, that's 100,000. that's 100,000 times point three, so that's, yeah, I'm doing math. 150 times five, 750,000.
So the Cosmopolitan received 750,000, about?
Right.
And the project itself was how many millions?
I think it's 24, 27? I'd have to look at that, but...
So 750,000, right now, we're, we've been considering almost 3 million, right, on this project?
Yes.
3 million for a 30, I think the last amount that I heard was 38 million for the project. So I don't understand why we would be wanting, I mean, needing to give more money for a project that has already started, like...
Well, first off, they didn't start before, you know, they got their application in before they started construction. And secondly, I mean, getting downtown is difficult. I mean, take a look at how much stuff has been downtown. Nothing has really gone up without, without a, the Best Western, you know, got incentives, the Cosmopolitan, you know, it's difficult to do. And if you want to do this, if you want downtown to be a center, then you're going to have to do it. You need to decide, the nine of you, right now, is, are we going to make this a center? If not, you know, vote no, let's move on with life.
And I don't, I think we all agree that we want to incentivize, you know?
All right.
Yeah, we do.
Call it to a vote.
I mean, I think we all agree, right, that we want downtown to thrive?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But this is, this is the cost.
Okay, they may not nod, you know, because it's me saying it, but I think we all agree that we want downtown to thrive, and we need more people living, and we all can agree. But I think the...
The amount.
Yeah, the amount is...
Don't get me wrong, there's a reason why I'm on this side and you're on that side.
Okay, so for me, it would be the amount, and then for other, for another reason would be the way it was presented. And I, if you remember, if y'all remember, I abstained on the first vote because it was a lot of information, and I really couldn't get why we needed to, I mean, after the project had already been vetted and they had already applied, the EDC had already recommended a million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Why come back, you know, and ask for more? But I, through these conversations and because of this, I'm being educated that according to an individual, that, that because Corpus Christi has a policy that we don't incentivize, you know, until, we don't incentivize until we, before the project begins, right?
That's correct.
But the state of Texas has a different...
Right.
Category or ways, I mean, they, their policy is different, that they're able, according to the policy, even after the project has begun, the developer can come back to the Type B board and ask for more money.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So for me, the problem, I think, for, is, is this, is that, for one thing, do you know how much money we do have in the Type B fund right now to incentivize other?
Right now, if I'm correct, it's 12 million? Yes, 12 million available.
So 12 million that we have right now, that we could incentivize others to invest in downtown, or, and it has to be downtown or it can be anywhere?
As long as the project is in the guidelines, they can certainly do it, and I've met with people and I've told them that you can do that.
Okay, so I was having this conversation with this individual, and I was saying, I don't think a lot of people know that. I mean, it's like the guys that, or the people that are professional developers know that they can go after this money, but your mom and pop business owners may not, and it's kind of...
They do.
Okay, well, you know, I'm not in the business, you know, I'm a community, you know, activist, and so that's not my wheelhouse, you know, I'm just saying, the ordinary person that, you know, that I hang out with, you know, that I go visit the Takerias and whatever, they, they never, we don't have these kinds of conversations, but I'm grateful that, in a way, you know, that this happened, because this would be an opportunity to inform the public that there's actually 12 million dollars that we could help others incentivize and, you know, help to get more businesses going. But, but I think the bottom line on this particular case is the way that it was presented, and...
No, I understand that, and, you know, we take responsibility for that, you know, we, the EDC tend to be more nuts in bolts, jobs, and, but the Type B, I went back and actually listened to them, Type B, and, you know, we understand what the EDC said, we understand, but we believe that this is a catalytic project.
Yes.
For downtown, and they didn't mention that Chaparral Street's been dead for 14 years, so, you know, I had my wife's 50th birthday at Bourbon Street, just great time.
No, and I agree, I mean, I really do love this project, and like you said, it's unique, it's, and it is a catalyst, but I guess every project is different, and even though, you know, I love it, I, the project has already started, why do you need the taxpayers' money? I mean, they're still going to build it, so I, my, it looks, I don't think I'll be supporting this, but not because it's not a good project. I think, you know, I think it's going to be something great for the downtown and...
And we all hope so, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, for Corpus, but the way that it was presented, for me, you know, puts up some red flags, because, you know, of course, we, I think everybody saw the news that, you know, that there's some shenanigans that happened, of what was presented to the city, what was presented to us, and what was on the application. I think that still needs to be investigated, and that's one thing that I think we need to clarify. Peter, did we find out about the application? Was it altered? Was it, you know, manipulated? What did happen? I think the city deserves an answer.
Right, so we're working with the applicant on that, Councilwoman. We requested information from the applicant, they requested clarification from the city, and so we're in the process of working with them to get that information. We feel confident we'll get it, so that's, that's the response on that.
Okay, and Councilwoman, just for clarity, the Downtown Management District, they do a very good job. They do make absolute certain that the businesses that come in are aware of the incentive program, which entail these funds.
Right, well, this is just specifically for downtown, but what I'm trying to tell the community is that there is Type B money, yeah, so it's not just...
Well, right, but, right.
Okay.
It's, they do the same.
I will tell you that, that the EDC, Mike Culberson believes that the application was fine, the guidelines are, it was within the guidelines, it's properly vetted by our board, it's properly vetted by the Type B board, announced to you.
Okay. But what was, what we represented?
I understand, I understand, and it was, and it was really pushing toward the FEMA, and the reason why that is, is, and it's our, and it's my fault, is that, you know, we, when we look at it, we look at infrastructure. So, you know, we did infrastructure for the soccer field, we did infrastructure for Lighthouse Point. These are the things that we did, and that's, that's why we pushed the agenda memo that way. But really, the Type B said in their quote that this is a catalytic project, and that's why they went with 2 million.
Yeah, and I...
But I am comfortable with it.
I like, yeah, I like the project, it's just the, how it was presented, and because the project had already started, I don't think they need any more money from the taxpayers.
Well, you know, had we, had we finished in January, this would, you would say, okay, we're fine, right? But we didn't.
Thank you. I'm afraid to turn off my mic, because then I won't get another chance, but I think I have one more.
We've got to, I hate to say it.
No, I appreciate your comments.
You've got to move on. Okay. Yeah, Councilman Hernandez.
Timer. Okay, thank you, Mike, and I appreciate the time and taking, being in front to take the arrows here. I want to make sure that this timeline, because there's a very long agenda memo that talked about all the issues that came about. And, you know, unfortunately, via various reasons, the presentations and the information didn't always match up with what was actually happening.
Okay.
Okay, so just to go through the timeline, the request was made, it went before the EDC. EDC board members took a look at it, said, okay, we can't give you funding on this level, but we're going to do a calculation, a formula, based on their economic development, you know, and you could probably describe exactly how that formula...
Right, we use a RIMs2 model, which is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics and...
Okay, and your valuation that you came up was 1 million of 43,000 and some change, right?
Right. And we do that based on the amount of investment and the number of jobs and how much those jobs get paid.
Okay.
And that is essentially what the taxes that the city will increase by over a 10-year period.
Okay, and just to be specific, 1,43,433.
Yes.
Right? Based on the economic impact.
That's correct.
Okay, that recommendation went to Type B.
That's correct.
Type B said, okay, we're not going to use that recommendation, and decided to go with an amount of 2 million dollars, which was the original request.
Right.
Of 2 million dollars. And they gave some caveats, saying that it was not for flooding, and there was some structure around it, that they have to have a certain amount of employment through the first few years, and then extend it by 10 more employees from 55 to 65 over a five-year period.
That's correct.
Okay, however, it was really no basis for the actual amount. Now, by their standards, they don't have to give them an amount.
That's correct.
There's a great example of a statue of a hippo that was considered economic development in a city close to San Antonio.
And the AG said that it's properly vetted, it's properly, and it is not to the Attorney General's, it's not up to him to determine what is economic development.
Okay, so I was just, for clarification, I was just saying, the Type B does not have to go with the REDC's...
That's correct.
...recommendation. It's just two separate things.
Right.
Now, because of some of the issues with the presentation, which Councilwoman Campus had pointed out, with, there was some editing, so to speak, and we are waiting on a response...
But that editing was really just the date of the press release.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. And I know that we had asked some questions, we're waiting on a response.
Right.
I believe the ask, the request was asked for in writing.
Right.
Correct?
That's correct.
That we would have to make the questions in writing?
Right, yeah, we had a verbal meeting, and then that was followed up by a request from the lot, from their attorneys, that said, hey, can you send that to us in writing? And so we're in the process of doing that.
Okay, and then we came to council, but what was in that agenda memo didn't reflect what Type B had provided us, what had decided their information was on. So we have a lot of, should I say, muddy waters that were not necessarily, you know, clear.
We certainly could have done a better job on that. I don't, I don't want to dismiss that as a...
You know, I get it. I get it, and so, you know, and I'm on the backside, I was not, wasn't, didn't quite track it all the way from the EDC to Type B, but didn't get it until the first reading towards us. So now I have to come, come back and kind of unbundle it, and try and get the exact what it is. Okay, but I guess the biggest challenge here is the, you know, Type B had recommended us a dollar amount without really saying why.
Oh, they did.
They don't have to, they don't have to, but they didn't really say why. But in light of the issues that we have, I think I will be making a motion to send it back to Type B for clarification on the amount and why they chose that amount, just simply because of this, of the environment that this has created, this muddy water that has been created by this. So after all the comments are done, I will be making that motion. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll wait till after public comment. Yeah.
Councilman Pusling.
Yeah, well, I don't understand Councilman Hernandez's comment, because in the contract that Type B Corporation signed, that I have a copy of here, it specifically spells out what their expectations are for this project. And it says that the company will invest at least 28 million dollars for the construction of the project, at least 120 rooms, 7,000 square feet of retail space, an indoor and outdoor dining space, the project must include high-end features, including metal framing and rooftop bar, and entertainment spaces such as the anticipated Topgolf digital amenities on the fifth floor, the retail dining bar and entertainment spaces must be available to the general public and not reserved for exclusive use of hotel guests. Then it also goes on to talk about owner before September 30, 2025, company must certify the creation of at least 55 new full-time jobs, and I think that's important, Mike. You said a while ago that your calculations are based on how much ad valorem tax money this is going to add to the pot, but it doesn't talk about what adding jobs is going to do for the city of Corpus Christi.
We do, we do add that in. But more to your point, we're going to be knocking on the door and we're going to be checking those, checking to see that they invested that much.
Yeah, so they're not getting a $2 million check tomorrow if we approve this. They have to each year for the next five years prove up through inspections that they've done, they have to create these jobs. The company shall, over the term of this agreement, create 65 full-time jobs no later than September 30, 2027, with an average salary of right at $31,000 a year, as described in the schedule below. Those are nice-paying jobs for our city. The company must retain all jobs created in accordance with this agreement for the full term of the agreement. So if they don't do that, they don't get the full amount of the money. And each year with the inspection, they have to have reached at least 70% of those goals, or they're not even considered for reimbursement.
That's correct.
So...
And we go in, we look at tax records, we look at invoices, we make sure that the TWC, Texas Workforce Commission, report that shows that these jobs are here, that they exist here. So, you know, nobody's like somewhere else, you know, that doesn't really apply here a lot of times.
Can't be working from home in San Antonio.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it also says, the company must retain ownership interest in the project for at least five years after completion of construction. Assignment of this agreement or payouts under this agreement during the five-year period is only effective if approved in writing by the city manager of Corpus Christi. So I think the Type B Corporation was pretty explicit about what their expectations are and why they granted this award.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, you're holding off, okay. I think that's all.
Ready for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Culberson. I'm going to go ahead and open public comment, and I think we have a few people that would like to make comment on item number seven. We'll start with Taylor Johnson.
And I had a slide. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Taylor Johnson, 4609 Sherwin Lake Drive. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Is this $2 million transaction an incentive or a reward? Rewards are retrospective, whereas incentives are prospective. EDC-type incentives always follow the rule, but for the incentive, this project would not be here. Not in this case, though. Let's look at the timeline and the process that was followed. TIRZ, project presentation on April 2023. Total improvement cost 32,745,500, based on the June 2023 final TIRZ Exhibit C. Job creation approximately 65. Incentives approved 1,550,000 in June of 2023. Next, we have the revised EDC application on November 2023. Total improvement cost 30 million based on the January 30, 2024 city agenda memorandum. Job creation 70, again, from the January 30, 2024 city agenda memorandum. CCREDC incentive proposed 1,43,433. CCREDC incentive proposed $1,043,433. Then, Type B incentive proposed $2 million for 55 to 65 jobs, double the incentive for less job count. The question, city council, staff, EDC, Type B ought to ask. First, if the incentive is not granted, what will the project look like? Five floors, 127 guestrooms, rooftop bar, retail space, and 55 to 60 jobs at a $30,000 average salary. Second, if the city were to grant the incentive of $2 million, what would the project look like? The answer is still five floors, 127 rooms, rooftop bar, retail space, and 50 to 60 jobs at a $30,000 salary average. So, final question, what is the city getting back for $2 million? The answer, absolutely nothing. The property is well under construction and already on the second floor of five. So based on this definition, is this really an incentive? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Zachary Bornstein.
I had a video on the slide. Video first.
Yeah, thank you.
Zachary Bornstein, 401 North Chaparral.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Hunter.
So as a banker, when you invest in a new project or go into a new project with somebody, you're not going to check flood zone first when you're building?
Yeah.
That's the big concern I have. As an insurance agent, that's the first thing we check. You can't even start building the building until it's insured. So when you're building in a flood zone, it has to be already checked, so why are we doing this?
Because it changed.
Six months after.
It changed.
Two, three.
The rules had come out later.
Nobody knew.
Four.
They changed.
We've been working on the rules for two years. You can expect those changes two years ago.
Silence from the EDC chief.
They did change them.
Seven.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, so every project that would be downtown would be in a flood zone, right? So are we going to give the benefit to everybody that's downtown, that's...
This exchange was on February 20th, 2024, while this slide was being discussed in support of the FEMA narrative. Interruption of a fellow council member who rightfully raised very serious concerns about a potential $2 million handout, seven times in 45 seconds in support of a false narrative. Pending an already ongoing investigation, this footage and the entire background will now be part of a supplement to Texas State Complaint SC 32310292, filed with the State Commission.
Can I play the video again, please? Thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
So as a banker, when you invest in a new project or go into a new project with somebody, you're not going to check flood zone first when you're building?
Yeah.
That's the big concern I have. As an insurance agent, that's the first thing we check. You can't even start building the building until it's insured.
One.
So when you're building a flood zone, it has to be already checked, so why are we doing this?
Because it changed.
Six months after.
It changed.
It changed. The rules had come out later.
Nobody knew.
And four.
They changed.
Five.
We've been working on the rules for two years. You can expect those changes two years ago.
Silence from the EDC chief.
They did change them.
Seven.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, so every project that would be downtown would be in a flood zone, right? So are we going to give the benefit to everybody that's downtown, that's...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bornstein. Koshig Bhakta.
Koshig Bhakta, residing at 6145 St. Dennis Street, District 5. Good afternoon, Mayor Guajardo, esteemed members of City Council and City Manager Sinoni. As President of Operations at ZJZ Hospitality, today I'm here to advocate for the approval of the $2 million incentive allocated to the downtown hotel project. This proposed establishment, featuring a rooftop bar, Topgolf Suites, and retail space upon completion, promises a much-needed addition to the revitalization of our downtown area. It is poised to become a catalyst for future development, transforming our downtown into a vibrant hub that has been long overdue for the past three decades. I urge you to disregard the unwarranted noise generated by a select group attempting to imply fraud. These claims are merely a tactic employed by our competitors to distract from the facts and delay the city council's decision. Three News did an investigative story on this yesterday evening and posted this on their Facebook post. Three News can confirm the date that was left out. Off the document was just the date of the news release. The document still had the most important date, the date when the new FEMA maps would take effect. Again, I urge the city council to support and approve this proposed incentive, recognizing the significant potential it holds to foster historical growth within our enchanting downtown. May this decision serve as a resounding testament to the council's unwavering commitment to advancing the progress and development of our beloved city. By endorsing this incentive, the council will not only propel economic expansion, but also affirm its dedication to enhancing the vibrancy and allure of our community. Together, let us seize this opportunity to shape a future that aligns with aspiration and vision for development in downtown as shared by citizens. Corpus Christi Type B Board clearly stated that this has nothing to do with FEMA, but it is due to a capzone project in the downtown area to spur other developments when this project was recommended for the $2 million incentive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bhakta. Ashit David.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good afternoon, everybody, and before, before we start, not part of my presentation, though, I'd like to extend my sincere feelings for Chief Markle, who was here earlier today, and what his entire team is going through. And I hope everybody in the city council, city manager's office, will stand behind our brave police department. Thank you. Does everybody have a copy? Okay, thank you. Ajit David, 5821 Ocean Drive. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, federal and state agents, if any in the audience, political consultants, and everybody in attendance, including members of the media. I think I covered everybody in this room. Good afternoon. In last week's council meeting, I had raised some very serious concerns regarding a federal document that seemed tampered, altered, or edited from its original source. The only response I received, I'm quoting, "That document went from one Xerox machine to another, causing some very specific information to disappear." This is the original document that you have on the screen. Let me show you how it's done. This is the original document, that is on FEMA website today. This was the only presentation that EDC had in front of council on February 20th. You see the red circle over there, that's where the missing information was. This is how it's done. You just Photoshop it, it's that simple. There is no use of a Xerox machine over here. This is just called electronically altering a federal document. We all know something very serious occurred, prompting the city to investigate and admit much later that they had made a mistake. It is extremely difficult to convince one, that the city manager, EDC chief, city council, at least six of nine, et cetera, all made a mistake. In fact, I'm told that the applicant is not just an architect, but also a past chair of the EDC. It cannot be a mere coincidence that everyone was part of this error. In fact, city staff still cannot recommend an approval to council. Take a look, a close look at the first city staff recommendation, which read, that is the first one on February 20th, it says, "Staff recommends approval." In fact, this was before all the issues had been highlighted. Today's staff recommendation reads, that's the next one, it says, "Staff recommends city council to consider this agreement." In other words, staff is saying, "We cannot approve this, so we're washing our hands and we'll let city council decide amongst themselves." With more important issues like diesel, infrastructure, sales tax allocation, et cetera, at stake, the city needs to rebuild trust with the community. Before council decides to even consider a vote, I'm requesting that you ask city manager, EDC, Type B, and the applicant only one question, not behind closed doors, but in front of this audience and in public. You all have a copy of that question. Did any part of the application to procure $2 million in tax dollars contain a federal document that was tampered, altered, or edited from its original source? Regardless if that document was ever used to make a final decision, we don't worry about what the final decision was. Just ask that question. If that answer even remotely leans towards a yes, stop the show immediately and disqualify the application. That will save the city a lot of embarrassment and disgrace once results of a higher-level investigation are out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Melody Nixon-Brice.
My name is Melody Nixon-Brice. I'm at 5141 Diver Duck Court, District 5. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city manager and staff. I'm the general manager at the Embassy Suites by Hilton, and I come before you today in support of the proposed $2 million Type B incentive funding for the Homewood Suites in the downtown area. My hope is that the smoke and mirrors being created by some to deter this approval will not cloud your vision. The truth is that the partners in this development have been nothing but transparent and have followed through on everything that's been asked of them. I've worked for ZJZ Hospitality for almost 13 years, and I've never doubted their integrity and their commitment to our community. This has been a cornerstone of their foundation and a reason why I proudly represent the company on various boards and committees throughout the city. Bringing a new hotel to the downtown area will not only increase options for travelers, but it will be an economic driver with the creation of more jobs, additional tax revenue, and due to the great walkability, it will encourage hotel guests to patronize neighboring businesses as well. The downtown management district has worked diligently over the last several years, building momentum and bringing vitality to the area, and this hotel project is another piece of that puzzle. Approving this incentive shows that our city is vested in working alongside local businesses to keep Corpus Christi growing. This has been my home for nearly 30 years, and I'm proud to call Corpus home. But I'm even more proud of the progress we continue making together. City council members, I respectfully, yet wholeheartedly, ask you to vote yes on the proposed $2 million funding request. Thank you for your listening ear and open mind and steadfast commitment to Corpus Christi.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon-Brice. Edgar Ramidis.
I won't take up too much of your time. I think most of what I had to say has already been said. Councilwoman Campos and Councilman Hernandez, Mr. David, kind of had the same questions that I had, and I hope that you all take the time to consider those questions before you take your vote. You know, for, as a, for most companies, you know, they, they make the project based on the revenue they're expecting, and I, I'm sure this hotel's coming whether you help them out or not, and they're going to determine their success based on the revenue that they drive. You know, I, again, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramidis. And last, we have Mr. Darrell Genzer.
Mayor, and to confirm, Mr. Genzer is not, not a resident. That's what he listed on his, this form.
Okay, thank you.
Get a minute, sir.
Mayor, council members. Darrell Genzer, 221 Commerce Street in Portland. I'm not a resident of Corpus, but I am a, an investor and business partner in different businesses here in the Corpus Christi area. I'm just going to echo the sentiments of some others that have come before me. I think with the questions that you have in front of you, in particular, some that haven't been answered yet, even though they've been requested, I find it would be difficult for the council to take action, considering all of the questions that are here. Again, like Mr. Johnson said, you know, what's really an incentive, this project is underway, you're going to get it regardless of you give them $2 million or not. So I think it's just caution, and I would highly recommend that the council, you know, put this on pause and look into it a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Genzer. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close a public comment on this item. And Councilman Hunter, I think you had a comment?
Well, thank you, Mayor. This, we've got a lot of mics in the room. Mr. EDC President, what is the average salary of a Corpus Christi citizen?
Corpus Christi, well, we actually hit the, the state average of 60,000, and that's our hourly wage. When you're talking leisure and hospitality, it's somewhere around 30,000, 29 to 30,000.
Thank you. And to Ms. Campos's question earlier on how, where is the community of TIRS and Type B funding?
There is no limit on either, and there's no limit on a, on a combination.
And I'm, I'm speaking of the public's awareness to be able to access funds to do their own projects.
Yeah.
Which I do think that awareness has grown quite a bit. It really has. But if you ask the majority of the community, they're going to say, what? I can get money to start my own business downtown? And I think that if we did build that awareness, we would have a lot more success downtown.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I do not think any of the people that were doing this project on the private side had any part to do with some of the accusations, because if we remember in the EDC board meeting, I voted along with... in the EDC board meeting, I voted along with our vice chair or chair recommendation to just go with a lesser number.
Yes.
So, although it will be awkward for lunch, thank you for the video earlier. I will say that any project that has to do with flood, and you're going to argue that there's changes in the flood numbers two years later, when it is our duty as a city to work with FEMA for a very, very, very long period of time to adjust flood maps, I think we should be, how I say this most politically correct under a microphone and a camera, we should be more aware and cognizant of using that as an argument to gain funding, especially when there's a two-year difference in when that funding or when the FEMA maps were given to us. Thank you.
Councilman Barada.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I just want to comment on some of the things that were said earlier. And first off, I want to thank the reporter from KIII for basically making the, bringing us to the information that that was the date of the press release, not necessarily the date that it was enacted. You know, and I guess I'm responding to Councilmember Campos on a couple of things. So first off, you know, we're elected for discretion. We're elected for discretion to be able to make a decision, and, you know, my argument is that, and I'm going to give some anecdotal information again, I recently attended a conference in Irving by a trade association that I belong to, National Association of Benefit Insurance Professionals Texas Chapter. Had about 375 attendees, attended the Weston-Los Colinas deal, anyway. And the 2026 conference, I was told was going to be in San Antonio, and the chair of that conference is from Corpus Christi.
All right.
And I said, "Are you nuts? What are you doing?" I said, "Have you seen the Homewood Suites?" And obviously, they have 350 attendees, so it's going to break off into other hotels, but rooftop bar, great place for reception, walkable amenities, you know? And I'm proud to say that we initiated a meeting with Visit Corpus Christi, of which they're now going to, their board has reconsidered, and most likely, it's going to come to Corpus Christi.
All right.
So, and a lot of that had to do with the catalyst that we, this council has decided, this pro-business council, and we're going to bring people from all over the state, this pro-business council, once again, we're not investigators, we're not, we're not, we're not into, you know, we're not policing, we don't do that. We've got an incentive before us that we decided that what's the merits of the project and what it's going to do for the community. And as you said, I've been saying decades, but it's been over a decade, that proper, those vacant buildings were, had been there, a lot of blight, contributed to crime in the neighborhood, you know? With the mayor's leadership, we lit it up with Corpus Christi Medical Center and their generosity, and we've all worked to try, along with the downtown management district. And I know, and some of the, I'm going to go back to how many of these I've gone to in the last week, because everybody knows I work downtown. The Surf Club received an incentive that I would argue is a small business, of which I was at the Surf Club twice last week and Water Street on Saturday. Okay? Fridas, now, did not receive an incentive directly, but the property did and re-outfitted it. Fridas Mexican Restaurant, now, of which I had breakfast there on Wednesday, breakfast there on Thursday, for meetings. Okay? What is it? And then the group I spoke about, Fortamac, they had breakfast there, of which they had about 20 people there, and that's a small business. Okay? They had about 20 people there because I complimented them. I said, "The barbacoa is great." Tortillas de mano, all right? Retro received an incentive. They came back and asked for a second one. Portis Country Kitchen did not receive, or PKK didn't receive the incentive directly, but the property, the development, the incentive was there, so that way, that area was improved so they could move in. Noisy Brewery has received multiple incentives, of which I ate there last week, too.
You can eat one.
Yes, we do. We got to eat lunch. I eat twice a day. I spend a lot of time here. Lucy's receives an incentive, very popular, survived through the pandemic. Bar Under the Sun, which I did, I went to a reception there with Aflac people. Goldfish has received an incentive. I didn't go there this week. The Ritz Theater, we have an incentive that's put aside, that's reserved for them, to revitalize. The Chamberlain, which I'm in, obviously received a large incentive, of which Levy Dykema was there, and I believe they have 10 employees working in that location. Pape Dawson moved, opened an office in Corpus Christi. They heard Mike Pusley and I, they played it. We want local, so they had to become local, and I think they have probably a dozen people employed there now in that facility. Of course, I know they're stealing them, too.
I understand.
But they've got about a dozen. They just expanded now. A law firm is opening up in there on the second floor. And Barada, Roland Barada Insurance is there, you know, which we employ several people. Frost Bank has received an incentive. The Residence Inn has received an incentive, of which they've got a great location. Holiday Express, Holiday Inn Express, along with, what's the other component to that? Everybody remember?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. They've received an incentive, of which, huh, huh? Well, they will be. We've appropriated. We've appropriated. So this council is a pro-business council, and that's one of the reasons why I support it. It's a pro-business council, and I think those are the things that we need, whether they be small business. The other thing I want to mention, ICE Engineering, which is not downtown, in District 3, I think, you know, Mr. Jimenez had maybe four engineers, and they were working out of a portable, and we provided an incentive, and I think they've got probably 100 employees now. You know, Goven was years ago. He was one of the first ones to receive one. So that's what I'm saying. This is a pro-business project. It's a catalyst, and that's why I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley?
Well, Roland stole a bunch of my thunder, so, which will save us all a lot of time. Yeah, I just think that, you know, I want to go back and just give a little brief history. In 2009, when I came to the Commissioners' Court, the Commissioners' Court had voted not to join the downtown TERS. And basically, it was on the rails, because when the county backed out, so did Delmar College. And so I convinced Judge Neal to put it back on the agenda. We had the city come over and present the numbers to us again, and we ended up voting to join the TERS, and when we did, Delmar College did. So all I'm going to say is what downtown looked like in 2009 and what it looks like now is daylight and dark difference.
And it didn't do well. Didn't do well for like the first four years.
Yeah, the first three, four years. It was skimpy.
It was $16,000.
It wasn't much needed in us having meetings. So, but it has, it's really come on strong, and I, you know, we are encouraging businesses. Would those businesses relocate in downtown if we didn't offer those incentives? Maybe. I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, we've offered those incentives, we pay those out, and the proof is in the pudding. If you look at our tax collections for the downtown area, they have increased substantially over what they were in 2009. So I think, all of that aside, this is, you know, a great way to do it, and I appreciate the fact that EDC and the Type A Corporation and the Type B Corporation, which after three years and four months, I still haven't figured out exactly how all that works. But I know I've read the Type B Corporation contract, are there rules? And I think in this case, they stuck to their guns, and this is a good project for downtown, and I support it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to send this back to type B for clarification with regards to the amount of the incentive.
Okay. We...
The detail on the amount, Councilman?
Yes.
Right. Councilman's asking for the detail. So as Councilman Pusley said, and as we said, and it's in the briefing memo, the Type B Board recommended funding for the project so that it would include high-end features, including metal framing, a rooftop bar, entertainment spaces, and so on, but there's no line item, per se, budget, and I think that's what Councilman Hernandez is asking.
And I'll clarify that in the sense that the request initially was for funding or
for flooding mitigation.
Right.
Which was discounted, but it's the exact same dollar amount as what was actually provided by type B.
Right.
So just to make sure that there's no confusion, I want some documentation as to how they arrived at their number for the $2 million, just to make sure everybody's protected.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Councilman Hunter?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What happened?
I took my microphone off.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Pulling Pusley. Mr. Zenoni, are y'all not recommending that we approve this today?
We're recommending...
Postponing it?
A motion that Councilman Hernandez is a decent one. We don't have all the information to make a recommendation. We're still working with the applicant on getting their response. We're working with, we asked them, they sent us back a letter. We'll be sending them a letter. So if we had to, that's why we're saying, let's discuss the merits of it here at the city council meeting. If we...
I mean, you've had four weeks to investigate this.
Right. We're still working with the applicant. I didn't write the memo, but the EDC recommends approval.
Okay.
I'm not here just to...
Yeah, well, we voted on that months ago.
Yes, sir.
As an EDC board member, I was there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you, did you have something else?
I can't second that, because we don't know how, who gave us the presentation, or I have not been told who gave us the presentation. I have not been told how the presentation made it to our agenda. And so if you go and you, if I second your motion, that would be in support of giving a false presentation, no matter who it came from. And I don't think the individuals applying for the type B money did that. I really don't. I think that they're fine, outstanding community members, and they would never do anything like that. But I am concerned that something was left out. It is very clear when we look at the line that there was potential photo shopping. And I do want to say thank you, Mr. Culbertson. You've had to be in the middle of this project from the beginning. I'm very sorry about that, and I really appreciate everything you do for the city and the regional area, and I'm glad you're feeling a lot better. I'm glad you recovered.
I'm getting there.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Roy, and then I'd like to call up Leah Olivari.
Do you want to call her up first?
Go ahead. Yeah, Mrs. Olivari, would you please come up? And Leah Olivari is the chair of the Type A B Board. So I think we can get some clarity that some councilmen are looking for right here. She represents the type, the board that approved the funding for this project, why they approved it, how they approved it.
Thank you. Maybe I should start by referring to an email that I wrote on March 1st to Ms. Holbrook, and that was the day, I believe, after y'all heard the presentation. And that email basically said, "I'm not sure what happened," but the caption that apparently the council considered, and even the subsequent information transmitted to them, did not seem to adequately reflect what the action of the Type B Corporation was. If you go back and look at the video on December 11th, it's very clear what that board, after two meetings, two closed sessions, first one where we went and asked questions, got answers, came back, got that information, some of which was kind of confidential information in closed session. We considered the action in open session. We discussed it at length, and the decision was that what interested us was not anything to do with FEMA or Free Board or any of that. In fact, we said, a number of us said, "We don't want to get in that business. It's an endless, endless bit." And so our, what I think, I think I speak for the other members of the board, that what intrigued us, what excited us, was the retail component, and specifically, the street-level access to that retail, the fact that we were taking a greenfield site and we were developing some retail and also street-accessible restaurant space. That's a component, if you've been downtown, that we think, I think we thought was missing in that area. At no time, by the way, did anyone come to our board with any concerns or issues. But I will say that I've been involved in the FEMA thing. It really did not resonate at all with our board. Now, to the extent that you want to open space onto the street, it does create different requirements than if you just put up a wall. I mean, windstorm, all kinds of things have to go in in order to make that street accessible, and that includes the flood and Free Board requirements that are now in effect. So that was the basis of our decision, and I think we learned some lessons in talking with the staff and the EDC and some of the council members. I mean, we learned that perhaps it would be important that we see what is going to council before it actually goes to council. As an example, as chair, you, I am required by state law to sign that agreement, and yet I might not even see the final agreement until after y'all, which is fine. You can change the agreement, but at least see the draft of what might be presented to y'all. So I think, working with Mr. Zenoni and his staff, we're going to make some improvements there. I agree with you, Councilmember Campos. I think we could do a better job of advertising, not, and there's a lot of confusion over the different types of money. It's like a toolbox. We've got TERS, we've got type B, we've got even a little bit of type A left, and the more that we could bring all that communication together for businesses to know what is available, I think, would be very, very helpful. On that note, though, I want to say that we have worked hard with Delmar and Small Business Development Center. As you know, you approved the contracts. We have tried to do a lot of help, if you will, for smaller businesses. We talk about what areas we could expand into with the remaining funds. I think that, you know, I think there's some opportunities here, but what we saw in this was an area that certainly we've all talked about needs redevelopment. It's an opportunity zone. We also spent some money over on North Beach. That's not to say that we would go anywhere in town and incentivize retail or something, but it was a particular situation that I think the board found attractive. I, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I mean, I hate to speak for my fellow board members, but I think we're in agreement on this.
Yeah, Leah, if we, Mayor, if you, this in part follows up from Ms. Olivari, but also to Councilman Hunter, so on the merits of the $2 million, the city staff supports what the type B recommended it for, which was just for what Leah just said, for ground floor activation. We're going to roll the tape here in a moment that shows Leah at the type B board with her...
No.
So people can hear it firsthand, so that, without any doubt, that, without any doubt, we support that. The issue with the staff is that there's still some uncertainty in some of the information, but we're working to get that, but let's roll this tape real quick.
Let me make one statement about that, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I couldn't, I couldn't even tell you what was on that slide. I guess personally, at least, I had decided from the very beginning, when I reviewed the project, that this FEMA Free Board thing was a nonstarter for me. I had to have, I had to see something beyond that.
Right. Nobody noticed the slide until after the first reading at city council.
Exactly. I mean, nobody, we never talked, there was no, we never talked about any previous or future election. A lot of things that have been out, I guess alleged, never came into the discussion of our board.
It was brought to our attention after the council's first reading. So you had three meetings with that slide, the council had one, and then after that, it was brought to our attention. That's where we're, but we do have the tape here from the type B, just because it's important to hear this, it's firsthand from Leah from...
Okay.
From January. So if we can roll that tape, I think they have it from the type B board.
Yeah, but we, we didn't know it, is all I'm saying. We didn't pay attention to that slide.
Okay, let's roll it. What?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll put your...
I did bring it to the attention of council and the staff. That was a video that's going to make...
Oh, yes.
Here in a second. So for that statement...
We can't hear your comments on the mic, Mr. Hunter. Well, that was in his phone.
I was saying that we never...
Yeah. So you may not have ever, but Mr. Zanoni said that no one was aware at the first meeting.
Got it.
I did make everyone aware, at least I tried to. Thank you.
Here's the Type B meeting. Go ahead, AB.
All right, then I'd... And by the way, the reason that the board, I believe, agreed that this was a worthwhile project is not because of all the FEMA floodplain zone requirements and everything, but mainly because we saw this as a kind of capstone project in the downtown area to spur other development. I believe we all said, "We're not interested in fixing everybody's FEMA problem. From now on, you've got to include that in your budget, or go to the TRZ or whatever." Correct. Okay. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve $2 million under...
Up to... Yeah, till move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. The motion passes.
Okay.
So that's just firsthand, you know, the Type B recommended this not for... Had nothing to do with FEMA floodplain. That's a separate issue that we're working through still.
Okay.
This is for the catalytic nature of the project.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Councilman Roy.
Thank you, and I appreciate the time that we spent. You know, this is unfortunate. I've sat here and I've listened to most of my council members and public comment that we're here at where we're at right now. And I have had one-on-one conversations with the city manager. I've had conversations with my fellow council members. I've even talked to Mike about this situation. And I appreciate the fact that you came in front of council and explained this. However... And this is kind of where, when I listen to Councilmember Hernandez and the city manager... I mean, this is my district, so I am very pro-business. I don't have a problem with this project, you know? I think it's going to be a great addition to downtown. I agree that downtown is an important place, and that the headway that we've made and the job that the DMD has done, and everybody that has helped facilitate and make our downtown area and any part of Corpus Christi, I'm a champion for. But I sat there, and Mike, when this first happened and we were trying to understand what's going on with... Why did we get this information? See, here's the problem. This city council, we can only make decisions based on the information that we hear, okay? And we got a presentation from you, and Heather came in and part of that presentation, and she presented information that really shouldn't have been presented. And when I sat down with you and I sat down with the city manager, I said, "You know, we've got to tell the story because, first of all, the people..." The people are sitting out here trying to understand, "What is all the conflict about?" We shouldn't even be here right now if what would have happened, should have happened in terms of the Type B board makes a recommendation, as you just heard. But no one updated their presentation. And I need to... One thing I need to have you understand, or the people that are listening, is that a presentation and an application are two different things, first of all. I mean, there are. I mean, if you take a look at the presentation that was given to us, and there are things that are... There are maps, there's other things. Part of it's brevity because you just don't go through and take pictures of the entire map or the survey of the property. So for us to determine was something left out that had material bearing, that's what I think the city manager's working on. But the bottom line is, is that the presentation should have been updated to reflect what the Type B board basically recommended. And that's what we should have heard, and we didn't. And we talked about it in the meeting, is how do we prevent this from happening in the future? It's unfortunate that it did happen because it's taken time up of everybody's time, and there's allegations there that really may or may not have been there. But what bothers me even more is that you come back up here a second time, and you basically go through the nickel-and-dime presentation that you're going to give without explaining how we're going to get there in the first place. And I made it very clear that I wanted to hear that, because the people need to hear it. And we're sitting here in this dilemma. So I actually feel that the appropriate thing to do should have been to take that first vote, because we may have... You know, if this was somebody's life, and we were the judges up here, and we took the information that was given to us, and we condemned that individual based on that information, the only way we could make it right is to... Once we found information, is to act on it. Well, as a council, we found out we got the wrong information. We didn't get the whole story, right? We didn't get the right story. So in my opinion, we should have immediately, instead of wasting... We did waste four weeks. We should have basically eradicated that first decision, had the appropriate presentation given, based on what the Type B board voted on, and we go on down the road. I don't think anybody's really opposed to the project. But I cannot sit there and allow a decision to be made based on incorrect information.
I understand, sir, and it is our fault. We should have brought that up and taken a look at the Type B and changed our presentation, and we did not. And so this is where we're coming back through to talk about... Go ahead.
Anytime you put the toothpaste back in the tube, it's messy.
I understand.
And this is messy. And so here we are right now, and I would like to make a motion that... And I know it's time. First of all, they're in the middle of building.
Right.
I don't think they're going to stop. But I want to make sure that we get it right so that the public understands that we get it right. But my recommendation is let the city manager finish with his investigation. But I'd like to see a presentation... And one of the things I was thinking about, and I asked Leah, I said, "You know what? Maybe the Type B board needs to give that presentation. They're the ones that make the decision. The information that you gave wasn't even binding. Your information's just your opinion. Uh, you know, I think it's worthy of $1,040,000, right?" But their decision is basically binding based on that board. So I thought, "You know what? Maybe the Type B board should give that presentation. That way, we... It's coming right from the people that voted, and we get accurate information." Because it's a shame that city staff didn't give us the accurate information, and we didn't get the accurate information from you. We cannot do the job that we are supposed to do if we don't get accurate information. Thank you.
I understand. Yes, sir.
Did anyone have a second?
No. Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, no wonder I abstained last time. It was a lot of information, even now. I know Councilman Hernandez is looking for a second. And, I mean, I basically know how I'm going to vote, but, you know, I will give the city manager time to investigate and give that response. So I will support your second.
Have a second.
I don't need to say anything anymore.
Okay. Councilman Suckling.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a lot's already been said, and Councilman Hernandez at the beginning said there was a lot to unbundle here, and there sure is. Unfortunately, we've been put in this position, to Councilman Roy's point, really because of this... Really, staff put us in this position. We didn't have good information in the first place. So it's unfortunate, but to Councilman Barrera's point too, is, you know, we're pro-business, and the FEMA document, although there is the concern over the FEMA document, is it's really immaterial to why the decision was made in the first place by Type B, as supported by Leah. So anyways, that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilman Barrera.
Here, just a... Just real quick. Hey, Peter, who gave you the information about the allegation?
Who gave... Who brought that to our attention?
Where'd you get that? Who brought that to your attention?
Yeah, that would be the hoteliers from RGB. Yeah.
What's his name?
Ajit David.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't have a microphone for you, sir. I just want to read into the record.
Yeah. Ajit David brought that to our attention.
Okay. I'm just curious. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure there's no innuendo.
Right. It was brought to our attention after the first read of the city council meeting, as I mentioned.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, but I don't need to hear it.
Can you let me hear it?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, I don't need to hear it.
Mr. David, we can't speak. You're not at the podium, and we're fine. Thank you.
Okay, that's something I wanted to clarify. And then, once again, I said that we're not... There's a process, if there's an allegation or whatever, to follow. So... And I know, Councilman Pusley, you're... I see that you're in line to speak, but I wanted to move to... For approval. But everybody's motion has failed, so...
He has a motion and a second.
No, 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 he didn't have a second.
Yeah, he did.
I thought... No, no, no. He made a motion after that because yours had...
Yours failed, and then he made...
I didn't make a motion.
He didn't make a motion, okay? He said he would...
Okay, 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 okay. All right, all right. Well, then.
I have a second.
And this was... And then we were just discussing.
There's a motion and a second.
Did you what? What was your motion?
To send it back to Peter for more...
Could you turn me on to clarify?
Councilman Hernandez.
My motion was to send it back to Type B for clarification on the amount that was approved of the $2 million, because it was similar to what was originally asked for with the flooding information. This would also give us, because of the concern of, you know, the editing of the document of the FEMA page, it'll give us time to get fully vetted from the city management, plus it'll also give us information from Type B as to clarify how they got to the $2 million.
So...
I think...
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the chairman clarified that.
No, she didn't clarify as to... She clarified as to the reason why they chose to support the project. She didn't clarify as to how they got to that particular number of $2 million, which was the original request. Now, I mentioned that they don't have to.
They don't have to.
They don't have to, okay? And that's okay. But we're asking for that information in light of all the information that has been brought... That has been brought up. And this is, in a lot of ways, I'm looking at this as to protect us as an organization, as a city, so we don't have any out, you know, lingering thoughts of malfeasance.
But Councilman, there's the... And I'm sorry, I know we're... It's just...
Go ahead.
Here's the whole thing. I mean, there were comments... There's been comments made about a walking quorum with regard to an MOU, of which there was a process that was followed. There was a lot of innuendo that was made. There was a process that was followed. That person filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission, and therefore, those individuals were, what is it, vindicated by a process. It's not something... And the MOU failed because of the fact of the lax support of the council, not because of the fact that... Not because of the fact that we felt that there was any wrongdoing. Anybody can make allegations about anything. I mean, and if Rachel Caviaire made allegations and Peter had listened to it all the time, then we wouldn't get anything done, you know? I mean, I think that right now, that's not before us as to whether to decide... And I'm sorry to be calling her out, it just came to my head, I'm sorry. But, you know, there's times that we have to make a decision of what we're going to act. There's a cost associated with waiting. There's a cost to the community for waiting because of the opportunities of the synergy that all these restaurants and all this opportunity that they're going to lose because now all of this walkable... It's not just... It's not just... And then the revenue that those individuals will lose if that gets held up. The idea that is speculative, the fact that they're going to do it anyway, is speculative. It's speculative. Because if we turn this down, well, then, there's no rooftop bar, and perhaps there may be no retail, you know? I'm speaking as a businessperson despite your smirks. As an individual that has invested in this community, invested in employees, as an individual that makes payroll at times where they... And I'd say, as an independent business owner, there's sometimes my employees make more money than me, Sylvia. I have employees that made more money than me because of my commitment as a small business owner and to the risk. But I'm sorry, I've taken Mike's lead there, it got to me. But my thing there, in addition to the ad valorem that we will lose by kicking this off and continuing to wait, I just see no purpose in waiting. All the questions have been asked and answered, and anybody can make a decision. I just feel that it's important that, for all the reasons that we've been told to wait, is that we've had a competitor that basically brings forth allegations, which that's fine. He can, and there's a process for him to follow. I think it has nothing to do with us. If there's any... If there's any ill-doing, there's a process for that. It's not for us. I'm not a police officer, I'm not an FBI investigator, and I'm not... I'm not somebody that makes that decision, and I think it's wrong for any of us to make that decision. Thank you. I'll get off my box. I've spoken twice.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I just don't know what this is going to do to change what we're going to end up doing here in a few weeks, anyway. I mean, we... Ms. Olivera is here to answer questions about what their justification was or what their decision was about the fact that they gave the two... And Ms. Campos, I'm going to tell you, I don't interrupt you when you're talking, and if you continue to do that to me, then I'm going to make it a point to interrupt you every time you talk. Yeah, you are. Yes, you are. Yeah, you are. So next time you talk, I'm going to make sure I do.
I want you guys to stop. Okay.
So, Mayor, I'm putting you on notice, the next time she's talking, what I'm going to do.
Okay.
So, Ms. Olivera, as I go back to my point, she can answer any questions that we have, I think, associated with why they picked this number. And as we said from the beginning, and as Michael has said, Mike Culbertson has said, they don't have to have a reason. They can... The ask was for $2 million, right?
That's correct.
And they asked that based on whatever their decisions were associated with that, and the Type B Corporation said yes.
That's correct.
So the fact...
Right.
That has already been decided.
Right.
I mean, they've already decided what this... So... And Peter, I want to say, as I said a while ago, you've had four weeks to come back to us with answers on this. And I put part of the blame on you and your department for dragging its feet on... You had a request letter from the applicant, which y'all chose not to act on for whatever reason. And so part of this is your staff's fault. You're in your staff's fault why we're in this position.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'm reversing my second. I'm not the second.
Okay, Ms. Campos.
That's what I was trying to tell our secretary.
She's withdrawing her second.
I'm withdrawing my second. Withdrawing her second, okay.
Let's go ahead and vote.
So we do not have... The motion fails. End of story. Councilman Roy.
Seeing that that motion failed, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to vote.
Okay. A motion to approve. All, oh.
And this is as presented, right?
As presented, yes.
As presented.
Please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The council will go into executive session on item 13 per Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071. We will return.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our meeting and pick up where we left off, which is Section L, Individual Consideration Items. Item number eight is motion awarding a construction contract to Barcom Construction for the American Bank Center Exterior Improvements Project. Mr. Edmonds.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is an item to award an approved CIP construction project to Barcom Construction for various upgrades to the landscape and exterior area around the building at American Bank Center. And if you'll indulge me, I've got a couple of photographs that I think will do more than my words to show what we're going to do.
Okay. We have a couple of questions. Well, can't get, how'd you get that? There we go. Let's see, Councilman Hernandez.
A real quick question on this one, on the irrigation. Is there going to be any attempt to use the condensation from the HVAC system for irrigation versus using city water, considering we're in a drought?
That's not part of this project. That's something that they could consider later on. Of course, we're in the process of making some major changes to the HVAC, but we are going with a plant pallet that is much more drought tolerant, so we're not contemplating having to use as much water on the irrigation. And we've got more modern system that's more efficient.
I understand that you're that, but it does look, I mean, considering we are in stage two, going into stage three, hopefully not, knock on wood, right? But, I mean, it does look bad that we're not taking that into consideration. I know we've ordered an HVAC system, but I thought that was for the other side. Where, I mean, you have two HVAC systems where you could get condensation from, why not utilize that?
We ordered new chillers for the arena, and they're on order. And there's going to be a future project to install those. I think we could potentially look at that. I'm not familiar with the mechanics of that. I can tell you it's not part of this current project, the way it's designed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Okay, first question. I hope that in this, I don't know what all exactly they're doing, I kind of read through it, but are they going to fix the steps going up to where you go up on the, kind of the backside from the Harbor Playhouse parking lot up toward the Selena Auditorium? And then the other main steps going up to the ABC Center?
Item number eight is a motion awarding a construction contract to Barcom Construction for the American Bank Center Exterior Improvements Project. Mr. Edmonds.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. This is an item to award an approved CIP construction project to Barcom Construction for various upgrades to the landscape and exterior area around the building at American Bank Center. And if you'll indulge me, I've got a couple of photographs that I think will do more than my words to show what we're going to do.
We have a couple of questions. Well, can't get, how'd you get that? There we go. Let's see, Councilman Hernandez.
A real quick question on this one, on the irrigation. Is there going to be any attempt to use the condensation from the HVAC system for irrigation versus using city water considering we're in a drought?
That's not part of this project. That's something that they could consider later on. Of course, we're in the process of making some major changes to the HVAC, but we are going with a plant pallet that is much more drought tolerant, so we're not contemplating having to use as much water on the irrigation. And we've got more modern system that's more efficient.
Well, I understand that you're that, but it does look, I mean, considering we are in stage two going into stage three, hopefully not, knock on wood, right? But, I mean, it does look bad that we're not taking that into consideration. I know we've ordered an HVAC system, but I thought that was for the other side. Where, I mean, you have two HVAC systems where you could get condensation from, why not utilize that?
We ordered new chillers for the arena, and they're on order, and there's going to be a future project to install those. I think we could potentially look at that. I'm not familiar with the mechanics of that. I can tell you it's not part of this current project the way it's designed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Okay, first question. I hope that in this, I don't know what all exactly they're doing, I kind of read through it, but are they going to fix the steps going up to, where you go up on the, kind of the backside from the Harbor Playhouse parking lot up toward the Slayna Auditorium, and then the other main steps going up to the ABC Center? Those steps have been in bad shape for a long time, cracked concrete, pieces missing off of them. Is that, is that what they're looking at? Are they going to do anything with that?
No.
No?
I don't think that's part of this.
I don't think so, Councilman. That will be, that's going to be more work that has to be done. It's probably in our $60 million maintenance program that we have.
Well, at some point, we need to look at that. I mean, I saw a guy trip there the other night at the CCA banquet that he almost fell because of the poor condition of those steps.
Yes, sir.
And then my second question here is this picture with all these palm trees. So, and I don't want to, you know, say bad things about my friends who are landscape architects, but if a piece of ground needs two trees, a landscape architect will put six. So, are we really going to have that many palm trees? Because if you talk about wanting to save water, we ought to be planting less than more. That, to me, would be just, I mean, you can't plant trees that close together even if they're palm trees.
No, I agree.
That's just silly.
Is that, is that literally speaking here?
This was a drawing, a rendering that was done around 60%. I can't say that those represent the actual numbers that were on the final design.
Well, I think we need to look at that seriously, because that's just too many palm trees.
I can tell you, we'll, I'll have them take it under advisement. It's easy to take out.
They will begin to interfere with each other's growth because they block out the sun from one another, so if they're really planting that many, that's just silly.
I'll take that for action. We'll look into that, and if we do feel like we've over prescribed in that, it's an easy matter to drop some of those.
But I'm serious. You have to, you have to really look at what landscape architect, because they really like to plant plants. That's their job, so.
Yeah, we don't want that many.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good catch. Councilman Hunter.
Oh, sorry. Did I make a motion already? I think I did.
You did.
I think you did before I started speaking.
In a second.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Good. And Sylvia, I think you got some competition on your tree planting expertise over here. Thank you for using a local company. I really appreciate that, so.
It helps.
I did want to add that before we vote on it.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number eight? Okay, there being no one, we will close public comment. Please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number nine. Item number nine is, what is it, consideration? Consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Corpus Christi, Texas General Improvement Bonds, a Series 2024, for the first issuance of bonds from the Bond 2022 Authorization for Improvements to Streets and Parks and Recreation Facilities in an Amount Not to Exceed $50 Million in refinancings in an Amount Not to Exceed $105 Million. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number nine? There being no one, we'll close public comment. Please submit your vote. Item number 10 is a consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Corpus Christi, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation taxable Series 2024B for solid waste improvements in an amount not to exceed $10,605,000. Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Campos, a second by Councilman Pusley. Is there anyone? I'll open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number 10? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. Please submit your vote. Okay, the motion passes. Here's again, see. Okay, item number 11 is consideration and approval of ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Corpus Christi, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2024A for improvements to streets, city facilities, and public safety facilities in an amount not to exceed $39,400,000.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number 11? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment. Please submit your vote. That was for the prior year. The motion carries.
That was the reimbursement resolution.
Well, she said.
So we could be able to, so we could be able to spend the funds. So now we're selling them. Right.
Yeah, so, so why, what does it call for us in the process to vote for this twice? I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, I mean, twice, this is the fourth time we're probably going to be voting on it.
So the first time is the reimbursement resolution, so we can issue the contracts and award the projects.
So why, what I'm asking is, is why do we have to go back and say that, yes, you can now sell them? Is this just to say, hey, good job, we made the sale because in the past, we've always kind of taken a little while to do this, or what?
The former capital budget improvement manager. So we do this to save the city money. By voting for reimbursement resolution allows us to borrow against ourselves, start the projects, actually spend the money, then come back to you when we spent the money and sell the bonds, which saves us at least a year in interest payments and things like that. So it's a cost-saving measure. That's why we have to come back the second time over. So the first approval, you're absolutely correct, that gave us authorization to go forth. Legally, we have to come back to actually allow the sale.
Because we're making a change to it. Got you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item number 12 is consideration and approval of ordinance by the City Council of the City of Corpus Christi, Texas authorizing the issuance of its utility system senior lien revenue improvement and/or refunding bonds in one or more series for water, wastewater, and stormwater utility improvements in an amount not to exceed $186,900,000 in refinancings in an amount not to exceed $100,000,000. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Councilman Hernandez.
This is authorizing revenue bonds, correct?
Yes, sir. So before we go any further, I want to make sure that I introduce everyone here. So we have Bond Council, we have Matt Lee, and we have Stephanie Libby, and they are with Norden Rose Fulbright. And then we've got Dan Wegmiller and Victor Queiroga with Spiffy, I always say Spiffy, Specialized Public Finance, and they're our FAs. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for.
They are Spiffy.
Like I said, I hope you have your headgear. No, I'm just kidding. In terms, in terms of how much this is going to affect, I know I had a conversation with Constance yesterday in that this would not require us to raise any rates.
Correct.
That's speculative in terms of what other costs would be there that may, may or may not need to be spent, right? So in terms of what this does to our projected debt service as a percentage of our operating budget, what does that do?
Well, all of this is already included in our regular rate. This is not an increase in any of the rates. Anything above these would be, would have to consider an increase in the rate, but none of this.
Okay, I understand that. Now, what I'm asking is, when we, when we borrowed the money for this to utilize it, what is that going to do to our debt service as a percentage of our operating budget?
Yeah, that's not, okay.
Good afternoon, Constance Sanchez, Chief Financial Officer. So after our conversation yesterday, Councilman, I went and did the calculations. So for the water fund, we go from 33% to 36%. For wastewater, 23 to 27. Stormwater, 12 to 18, and then gas from 1 to 1.1%. And that's based on the preliminary amortization tables, because we haven't sold the bonds yet.
And what was it for stormwater?
It was 12% to 18%. And so that's just the debt service payment for that year compared to the total expenditures for the year.
Okay, the one that's concerning here is the water, and we don't have a policy as to how much debt we carry as a ratio to our operating budget.
That's correct.
What is, I mean, what do we see as norm for how much debt service you can have as a part of your operating budget with, let's say, the top 10 cities? I mean, is it?
Well, typically, what cities look at is the debt service coverage, that 1.15%. I don't believe that, that there is any standard as far as your debt service as a component of your total expenditures that I'm aware of.
Well, and in our conversation, there's only, you know, if you have a downturn in revenue, you only have two options. You either cut your operating budget or you raise your rates.
Correct, sir.
Correct? So you can't not pay your debt, right? So the larger that is as a part of your budget, the more challenging it becomes is if you have that, that situation.
That's correct.
So I guess what I want to ask is, you know, I know you, I understand the ratio, but the same, the same applies. You, in order to get the ratio, you either raise rates or reduce.
Right, expenditures.
Expenditures. You can't, but once the debt is there, you have to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
So help me be comfortable in where we should be in terms of how much debt we should carry for these individual, obviously, gas isn't a concern considering 1 to 1.5%.
Right, sure.
But all the, but water is immensely concerning, wastewater as well, considering we have all these future expenditures coming up, D-SAL, Mary Roads Pipeline, you know, all these improvements that we are required to do either by the EPA or TCEQ. So help me out here. Where is a good place to be?
Well, that's something we're going to have to look at. We'll have to compare what other cities have to see, but I know there's not a best practice for that. I did check that out yesterday.
Any recommendation from our financial advisors on this?
Want to step in, Victor? Victor, what?
I thought maybe I wouldn't be have to speak today, so sorry, Mr. Hunter. But, no, for the record, my name is Victor Queiroga with Specialized Public Finance. We have the honor of representing the city as your financial advisors. Regarding your question, Councilman Hernandez, there's no standard ratio with respect to annual debt service expenditures with your total budget. For utility systems, the main ratio that we care about and the rating agencies care about and our existing bondholders care about is your debt service coverage ratio, which currently is 1.15 times, where for every $100 in debt that we have, we have to produce net revenues of $115. So that's the, the main one that's going to determine how much we could afford to add on in future debt issuances to cover your capital needs. With respect to utility systems, is there a standard ratio? We got that question yesterday. We're looking at, because that's actually the first time somebody asked us, other entities do have ratios like other governmental entities, but for utility systems are very unique. Corpus Christi is very unique. It's a city-run utility system that has operations regionally. We also are unique in that we're trying to find a second water source, and so we know that debt issuances are going to have to come in order to get that second water source. So is there a standard ratio? There's not a standard industry-wide ratio that people look to seek as a utility system, but what I told Ms. Sanchez is that we could look at similar utility systems of the same amount of customers and try to come up with some ratios for you to get a sense as to what other entities are doing.
Okay. Again, it's about comfort level, and I just described, you have two choices, either cut operating expenses or, or increase rates, and both are not ideal, right? So where is it, where's that good balance to where we're not having to make those tough choices?
Well, like I said earlier, the ratio that we look at is that debt service coverage ratio, our minimum is 1.15, or else we can't issue additional debt to cover additional needs. Currently, we're at 1.45 times, and so there's some comfort there, but in terms of, you know, are we going to tie our hands with a specific ratio and not be able to address future needs? There's no standard ratio out there, but you're right, if we're going to grow and get additional water sources, it is going to have to take some type of future rate decisions later on. Right now, this debt issuance that we're considering today, in addition to a second one that's going to come up later this year, potentially does not require you to make those decisions yet.
Is that in conjunction with anticipated operating expense increases?
So, so the debt ratio that we look at, the debt service coverage ratio, that's net revenues, and so that's after we take care of various operating expenses. So with your rate consultants, as they're working with that rate study, they'll be factoring in those operating expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, on our water sources here, and Drew's not here, so we may not have these answers, and I can get them later. It mentions that we're, we either are going to, or we did choke Canyon Dam improvements and Wesley Seal Dam modernization improvements. Do you know what we did there, Peter, or plan to do?
Yep, both those are ongoing projects, Councilman.
Okay.
Yeah, both of those, I think we took the Wesley Seal in the last six months or so to council, or maybe longer, but both of those are ongoing.
Well, I've slept twice since then, so I, I just don't remember what.
No, no problem, yeah. Both of them are ongoing projects.
Okay.
They're in our CIP.
Okay. I'll go look.
Multi-year, the multi-year projects.
Okay, multi-year proj, and, see, I had another really good question. If we, if we decided to, Peter, maybe this is something you could get for us later, if we, if we as a city decided to implement a second water treatment plant, it's just a normal, like the one we have now, how long would that take and how much would it cost approximately?
Yeah, well.
And I know you don't have that answer today, but maybe.
I'll have to get that for you.
If you could look that up, it'd be interesting to get that information. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, you know, we're talking about water, and water's highly sensitive, and we know we need it. So let's say we're looking at, we don't have what the estimate will be for, to fix the Mary Roads Pipeline, so, I mean, let's say hypothetically it's a billion dollars, and we also have to get final approval if we get over all these other hurdles for the desalination. That's, right now, that's $787 million. So could we actually afford almost $2 billion? We could, that's what you're saying, Constance?
It'll be over time, yes, ma'am. And, well, there's several factors that we need to consider, and one of them is a rate pact increases eventually. So that's one thing that we do every year when we develop the capital budget. We take the projects that are in queue, things that we're planning on doing, put it into the rate model with the assistance of the rate consultants, and then they come up with a model showing the impact over the next 10 years.
Right, so we're still waiting on the, the water rate models?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think the other plan was also the treatment, the re-treatment of water, right, Peter? I asked that too, like, what if we were to also follow through on the plan to the wastewater re-treatment plan?
Right.
And that would be like, I don't know, another, let's say, a billion dollars?
Councilwoman, I wouldn't put out, I would caution not to use any numbers like that. There's no evidence.
Okay, but this is like a lot of money, because, I mean, we're, we really, I mean, we want to get.
So I don't want to put out false narratives, you know?
Okay, well, let me rephrase this.
Yeah.
We want the, I think we all agree, I hope, that we all want the Mary Roads Pipeline fixed.
We'll have the, the Mary Roads Pipeline Study Report will be out in about less than two months now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And we, right now, we don't all agree on the desalination plant, so that, that's one. But we, I think hopefully, think that the treatment water plant is another viability to get, you know, additional water.
Right, using the, so we discharge about 30 million gallons daily from our six wastewater treatment plants. Some cities use that water.
Yeah.
All the way to potable water.
Right, right.
That's something we're looking at.
Okay, so just, I was trying to, you know, figure out in my head, you know, all this money, and I know, like you said, it, you know, don't, don't go out there quoting, but, but I know that it's, when would we, when would we ever get the water rate estimations for any of those projects? Like, right now, we're still waiting?
Right, as we, so as we, a good example is Evangeline Water. We're close to bringing to City Council an agreement that we've reached with the, with the Evangeline Water folk, so that will have a rate impact, so that's something that we can bring to council sooner than later. But as the projects have developed, like the two that you mentioned, we don't know the price for the Mary Roads Pipeline yet. We don't know the price for using effluent water. But when we do know those, we have a rate impact to go along with the conversation with council.
Okay.
So you're talking months to years in some cases.
Okay, but so, and I think we are all sort of anticipating that we're going to go into, you know, stage three during the summer.
It's looking quite probable, right?
Yeah, probable. So, and none of those projects will be in play. I mean, we know that, right?
Right.
So, so just to put it in perspective, that really the only thing that we can do now to avoid maybe possible stage three would be for everyone to cut back.
Well, everyone's doing that right now with six, two restrictions, right?
Okay, well, let me finish. Okay, so I am proposing, I'm hoping that maybe we can, because we don't go by percentages, we ask, you know, the people to cut back, you know, once now a month, because we're in stage two to water outside. But I'd like for us to consider doing the percentages of water that, that is being used by residents, businesses, industries. So anyway, it's just something that, you know, I've been thinking about, you know, how can we make it fair, because we're all in a drought. I always say that we should all cut back, and that means that if, you know, we were using a million gallons a day last year, and we need to all cut back 10%, well, that means we have to cut back, you know, 10.
Yeah. Councilwoman, this is probably not the right agenda.
Yeah, well, I'm just throwing it out there. I thought, okay, we're talking about water rates, let's, you know.
We're talking about the debt.
Oh, debt, okay.
I did want to say, we're going to be coming back soon with the drought contingency plans, that would be a more appropriate time to talk about changes to watering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Klein.
Yeah, just very quickly, I'm going to piggyback on what Councilman Pusley asked for as well. Peter, if you get numbers on the cost of a standalone water treatment plant, could you pass that on to me as well?
We'll pass it on to the full council. Councilman, yes, sir?
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Please submit your vote. And before we end, Chief Markle, if you'll just keep, well, I mean, I know Peter's keeping us, keeping us apprised of Officer Hicks, his, his status and how he's doing, but please do, and I just want to remind everybody to keep him and his family in prayer. What's that? Absolutely. Come on down.
How y'all doing? Mike Markle, please, chief. Yeah, Officer Hicks Kyle is still in the same condition. He's very critical. His wife has asked, just so you know, that she doesn't want any contact. She's very private right now, and we respect that, of course. We're hoping that he gets better, you know, we're praying. We've had a good vigil yesterday, appreciate those that came out to that. But, yeah, he's, he's in critical condition, and right now, there's not been much change since the, since the night he was shot.
Okay. Well, we'll stay in prayer and just keep us apprised.
I appreciate that, yep.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Markle. We appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.